Executive session scheduled. Priscilla, do you want to read the motion, please?
Sure. Okay, here it is. I move to enter into executive session under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss union negotiations with the police and fire unions. As to discuss these items in open session will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town as declared by the chairman.
So declared.
And to return into execu-- to open session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Case, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
(inaudible)
Okay, this being our first meeting after elections, we always have reorganization, so I will turn the meeting over to our town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business after an election is the reorganization of the board. The positions that we will be seeking tonight will be for Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk of the Board. We will begin with the nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Are there any nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Sturbridge?
I move Mary Blanchard to be Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
There is a motion for Mary Blanchard to be the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I'll have a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? With only one candidate, we will take a motion-- we will take a vote for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to be Mary Blanchard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the ayes have it, five to zero. I will then take nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I nominate Priscilla Jimis.
There's a nomination for Priscilla Jimis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, I'll have a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor signify by saying aye. Five to zero. Therefore, the question before the board is nomination of Priscilla Jimis as Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. All in favor signify by saying aye. Five to zero. Five to zero. Is there a nomination for clerk?
Nominates Selectman Dowling for clerk.
There is a nomination for Mary Dowling as clerk of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any other further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. And the recurring question coming before the board for Mary Dowling as clerk of the Board of Selectmen, all in favor signify by saying aye. Congratulations. I turn the meeting back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, people. Okay, on the agenda tonight, we have public service announcements. 6:35, we have a public hearing, renewal of earth removal permit. Rapp Co. Construction Company on behalf of Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. 6:45, we have a public hearing, change of beneficial interest application. Drake Petroleum Company, Inc., doing business as Extremat. 2:15, Charlton Road. 7 o'clock, we have discussion concerning Sturbridge Green Community's stretch energy code warrant article. Then we have department head reports, DPW, water and sewer, and council on aging. Then we have town administrator's update, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. We have a few minutes. Priscilla, do you have any public service announcements?
No, just to welcome Chase Kowinski to the board and wish him well, wish him good luck on his tenure. And to welcome again Michael Supernat.
Thank you.
Okay. Chase, I don't imagine you have any public announcement yet. Mike?
I don't either.
Yeah, I would like to thank all the people that came out for the town election, and I really look forward to working along with fellow board members and representing the people of Sturbridge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to, to thank the service of, of our former member of the Board of Selectmen for all the work he did over the last four years.
Yes, I know we did thank him at the last meeting because he brought the subject up, but it bears repeating. Mary, do you have any?
Well, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so Priscilla did, what I was going to do is welcome Chase and Mike back for reelection. That's awesome to have somebody new. And I also want to thank Craig Moran for his three years of service. Enjoyed working with him, and I look forward to working with our new member and Mike again. I see we've changed our seating arrangement, too, so we're mixing things up, getting some new energy, which is always a good thing.
Well, Priscilla thought that it would be easier if she was down there instead because I always tend to go to my left to start business, with Chase being new.
Yeah, I remember what it was, what it was like when I was new, and you have no, you know, until you get your feet wet, it's very, very hard.
Oh, so that was, that was nice. She could have started here, I would have been happy, no, it's okay, it's okay. I'm used to being last, so that's okay.
I know. At one time I did alternate, but then I forgot, so it's easy this way. Okay, I do have a few. CMRPC have their 2018 spring legislative breakfast on Friday, May 18th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We have a notice from TREC, join Friends of Sturbridge Trails for a special Earth Day event, trail site cleanup, Saturday, April 21st, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Two locations, lead mine trailhead at 10 Shattuck Road, or Heinz Farm Trailhead, 197 Lead Mine Road. Come help clean up our trails. Bring bug spray, work gloves, and water bottle. It's going to be held rain or shine. Families welcome. Come for an hour or all three hours. Pizza lunch at noon. Okay, and then Sturbridge is still seeking alternates to the Conservation Commission. We always hear a lot about, some complaints about commissions and boards in town, yet when we advertise positions, we don't often get too many people that want to get involved. People are busy, but if you're interested, please get in touch with the town administrator. We also have an Earth Day Neighborhood Trash Pickup. Sturbridge Conservation Office is again encouraging the townwide Earth Day trash cleanup event on Saturday, April 21st, and Sunday, April 22nd. This is a great opportunity for neighborhoods, school groups, individuals, and volunteer organizations to take advantage of this excellent community activity. To get involved, stop in the Conservation Office at the Center Office Building Tuesdays through Fridays, 11:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Heavy-duty trash bags are available for use in the cleanup. Volunteers will be asked to register by providing the names, the location of the cleanup, and the location where bags will be left for a DPW pickup. The office also asks that volunteers sign a release form and take a volunteer do's and don't list. Volunteers can select the area they would like to work on. Bags can be left at the nearest intersection for Sturbridge DPW to pick up on Monday, April 23rd. You can call the Conservation Office for more detail. And last but not least, we have a Marine Corps Certificate of Appreciation to the Town of Sturbridge. It's awarded the 17th day of January, and this is for Sturbridge's participation in the Toys for Tots campaign. Okay, and with that, it is 9:36. Mary, do you have the?
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Drake Petroleum Company, doing business as Extremat, for a change of beneficial interest with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen for premises locating at, located at 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, in accordance with Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 130. Am I reading the wrong one?
We have the earth removal.
I, I got halfway, and I thought, I think it's the other one. I apologize. All right, I don't know if I do have that one handy. Karen.
Yeah, this one's here.
Yeah, but where's mine? Okay, take two. In accordance with Chapter 3, Section 309, 320 of the Sturbridge General Bylaws, and Chapter 9 of the zoning bylaws, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the application of Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for the renewal of an earth removal permit at a site located at the intersection of Hamilton Road and New Boston Road, Sturbridge. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, 6:35 p.m. in Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, Sturbridge.
Okay, do we have somebody representing? Okay, would you please give your name?
Frank B. Carey with Burton Engineering, here on behalf of Ramco. Here as well this evening is Kevin Susie, president of the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, and Don Taft, former president of the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. So we're here this evening to extend an, an earth removal permit for work ongoing at the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, essentially quarrying, taking out sand and gravel. They plan to continue operations for the next two years, and actually approximately 18 months, and at that point, the agreement that they have with Hamilton Rod and Gun Club is set to expire. So they don't anticipate renewing it beyond this renewal at this point. So they're working essentially the middle part of the site on the plans that were submitted back in 2008, and, you know, due to the recession, I don't think they got as quick of a start as they expected. So they probably won't end up building, building out the full cut as indicated on the plans. Have a set of plans? Do you guys have a set of plans?
No, we don't.
We don't have that set of plans, no.
These weren't?
We had, we had one set that...
Okay, I apologize. More copies. If I may. So essentially, this top area likely won't get worked. They're currently working down this area back in here, and so the river range is up here, and that'll probably be left as is. Really depends on how busy this coming construction season is, how much material we have to take out. But at this point, they would be limited to this, basically the bottom half of it and the top half likely will not be touched yet. Depending on how much material they need to take out. So that's where they're currently working. Erosion controls on the site, it's on the site today, on my way here to take a look. We had some pretty significant rainfall yesterday, and so there is water on site, but the water is basically, is cleaned up through the erosion controls that they have in place. So I feel they are maintaining the site in a responsible manner.
Question?
At this point, I just, that's the long and short of it. They like to keep, keep the operation going, extend one more extension, and at that point, they'd be closing out. They do have stockpiled loam on site to stabilize just areas that they don't plan on working with loam and seed, as is required by the bylaw. And so at closeout, they would loam and seed the disturbed areas, vegetation would take over, and then the Rod and Gun Club could, you know, proceed to use the facility.
Okay, questions from the board? Mike?
What, I wasn't here the, the last time that, I missed the meeting that this permit was renewed, but at that time, there was some, apparently some questions by the Conservation Commission agent regarding the site, and we do have correspondence, current correspondence of, from the Conservation Agent. And do you have copies of that?
I don't have those handy, no, but I'm...
But have you received copies?
Jonathan likely does, and so I can follow up with him, but I have not seen those.
Apparently, there, there are some, some questions that our Conservation Commission has regarding this permit. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of those, those questions.
I, I have not seen those yet, so I was not. I believe Jonathan is, who basically directs the site, but those were not brought to my attention prior to coming here, so.
It was mentioned that there were some, some differences between the 2008 plan and, and what's currently going on, which you just stated.
Okay.
And, and so...
Yeah, I believe if there's any issues with the erosion...
The set of plans that you submitted to the town administrator, are those the current, are they the 2008 plans resubmitted, or are they current plans?
They are the 2008 plans resubmitted. I don't believe they have updated the plan. They're working based on the 2008. Their overall intent is still the same. If you need an updated erosion and sedimentation control plan, I believe that can be provided to you. I don't, what was sent to you was the 2008 plans.
What happened to the 2013?
That was stuff in there, yeah. That wasn't, that's not, that wasn't included in 2008. The 2013 was in this application, but...
Okay.
There's a new plan that has arrived, and I got questions for that.
Okay, I was not provided a copy of that, so I apologize.
Yeah, but that, that seems to be the problem.
Okay.
I know Conservation and now DPW, and then I know Planning Board had quite a few questions on what was submitted. You didn't receive any of the copies of those, did you?
No, I was given the 2008 plan and the applications, and basically told what was happening at the facility and the long-term plans of it for the next two years. Some of that history, unfortunately, I'm not, I don't know. So I'd have to check back with Jonathan...
Yeah, because then I don't think...
To address those.
Yeah, I don't think it would be very fair to proceed if you don't have all those questions that can be answered. We could continue the public hearing to a later date, so you would...
Seems appropriate, given that there are some outstanding issues.
Questions, right.
Again, you know, I walked the site, I think there is some stabilization there, but if there's concerns, then obviously we would want to address, address those specific concerns, so.
I totally, do I have the phone? Yes. Okay, I agree with our chair that, you know, but I'm just a little confused now. Are you going to present that 2008 plan again, or the 2013 revised plan? Just because, and you'll see when you get the memos.
Right.
One's within that jurisdictional buffer zone, the 200-foot.
Okay.
That's the 2013 plan.
Okay.
And our Conservation Agent is saying you need to file a notice of intent with Conservation.
Right, understandable.
The 2008 plan was outside of that buffer zone, so you wouldn't have had to file anything. So it kind of changes the process that you need to engage in.
It sure does. Yes, I agree with you on that.
Greg?
Essentially, I, when I, when I got the packet, I went to see Gene, just to see if my memory was correct. And this was supposed to be a fourth, like a four-phase implementation plan from start to finish, and, and we're not following any one particular phase. And then subsequently, you know, this 2013 plan was added, and it wasn't in on the last renewal, it was just added into the packet right now. And to me, there's a question of, you know, it's, it doesn't show really finished grades, good finished grades. It doesn't show where we are in the course of, you know, some of the, we don't know if these contours are old ones or new ones or what, but I think there's, there's quite a bit of updating to get close to before, you know, you go ahead and issue a full-time thing. So if they need an extension, you know, a 60-day extension or something, that's one thing, or a 90-day extension to keep operating, that's one thing. But at some point, a definitive finished plan needs to be submitted that, that can be approved, because what I'm a little worried about is that you keep this long-range rifle thing, and if, you know, if these are the existing contours they're going to meet, I don't know if they are or they're not. The real issue is, there's ledge there. The ledge, the gravel went down so far, it hit ledge, the ledge is protruding out. Where they thought they were going to be able to excavate to, they can't, or they, you know, can't readily or, or cheaply or beneficially get it. So it altered the slope and altered the excavation. So if they're still going to chase the ledge, but if there's ledge left in this long-range rifle thing, and you have a ricochet or something, you know, I mean, I, I don't think we should be, I mean, what, it's two-part. What I'm a little worried about is that it says it's a long-range rifle thing. I don't think we're in the business, we're, we're looking at the earth removal, not what they're going to do with it. You see what I'm saying? So we want to, I don't want to refer to the 2013 plan that says we're approving essentially a long-range rifle...
If it's not going to be installed, yeah.
Rifle range, you know, according to grades that are unknown, or grades that are not uniform, or grades that if somebody walked across there and they didn't meet the grades that they've done, because they haven't met any of the grades that they proposed originally. So if we, if we, and then if this is the final closeout, I'm worried about the bond. The bond shouldn't be closed out at the end of the date that was given, whatever that was. The bond should extend beyond like four months or six months, so that final restoration, everything solidified, and that if in fact, you know, they walk away at this end date, the bond is still viable, so that the town has a chance to, if we have to claim that bond, to do reclamation work, to get this thing so it's not a monstrosity or a hazard, the bond is still active beyond the closure date. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Greg, do you think you could write that all up?
I could, but it, you know...
I understand what he's looking for, I think.
It would take a million...
Yeah, no, I believe I understand what he's looking for.
Because you just get a copy of the Conservation Agent's concern?
Yeah, I have the Conservation, and I have Gene's.
Hi, Don, Don Taft, how are you?
Wait till you sit, please. The mic is for the television.
Don Taft, I'm the former president of the Rod and Gun Club. I just want to clear up one thing on the rifle range. The rifle range is basically going to be untouched. We're not going to go into that area at all, except for maybe for cleaning up some of the side burbs. So there'll be no excavation out of the rifle range. All of the work will be done below that area, basically within the area defined in the original plans.
In the 2008 plan? Or, I'm sorry?
I don't happen to have a copy of the 2013 plan.
I got it, right here.
Now, Gene, you got the 2013...
This, that's the existing.
This is, this is the rifle range, which is basically going to be untouched. This is the area that they're working on now. This...
Right.
This is a proposed rifle range, which is not going to happen.
Well, it's on the plan. That's what, that's exactly what I'm getting at. And what I'm worried about is...
The plan needs to have exactly what's...
What I'm worried about is, these contours are just shown. I don't know if they're existing, if they're your proposed finals. You know, I would, I would say at the time this was done in 2013, those were existing. Do you have these same contours out there in the field right now? Highly unlikely. So the problem is, you know, you know, your little memo said that we made adjustments, we made decisions, and we made adjustments, but that's fine. But you're supposed to come back and alter, you know, whatever you're changing, whatever the scope of your work is changing on site, you have to notify the town, the Board of Selectmen. They're the ones that grant you the permit. So if you alter it and you don't notify them, that's what I, that's exactly what I'm saying. I don't want that, you know, any more than, the way this thing is drawn, I don't think it should be a long-range rifle thing, whether you use it or not, is what I'm getting.
It will not be used as a, this will not be a proposed rifle... It will not be used as a, this will not be a proposed rifle range in that area.
Yeah, and then you got to, you know, you got a mountain, the, the thing is, you come in here, this stuff is already excavated, there's a, these grades should go up and right back down again, which they don't exactly show, and.
Right.
It's not, it's not representative of what's out there in the field, that's all I can tell you. And I understand those decisions are made, what you want, you know, we're going to do this, or we're going to do that, but at some point, you got to tell, you got to tell Board of Selectmen, and then you got to show them what they want. Now, I did talk to one of the contractors, contractors who's working there at 3:30, and, you know, I just kind of said, for my own personal opinion, it's, it's been a tremendous lack of communication on this project, and, you know, we're not, we didn't, number one, we didn't do it in phases, I can go right to the catch basin out, he, you know, Mr. Rampco was supposed to start, clean this outlet pipe out of that catch basin that was in the grass, he was supposed to clean that before he did any excavation work, and he didn't do it. And I know who did do it, because it was me. And so right from the beginning, from the beginning of this thing, it hasn't been, you know, there was a list of conditions that you were supposed to do, they weren't followed, there was a list of phases that you were supposed to do, they're not being followed, and now there's a new design with contours that, you know, I don't think, I don't think we, the town, should be associated with whether it's a long-range, or whether it's a long-range rifle thing or not, but we can't have that listed on there.
I agree.
Understood.
Because liability, I mean, the liability, the way this thing is done is horrible, and I don't, I'm just telling you, I wouldn't, I'd wait, you know, if you want to give them a 60-day notice to get this stuff together, that's fine, but without closing them down, I don't think we should close them down, but I also think that that bond needs to go beyond the end date, so that if this thing is a disaster two years from now, or 18 months from now, we have monies available to make it correct, or at least get it safe.
Yeah, well, there's certainly not going to be any decision made until you get all the information down that we need, and by, you know, talk to the planner, talk to.
Right, I think I understand a little bit better now, and I can understand.
Because certainly.
The concerns, yes.
It's not going to be approved this evening.
Right.
Mary?
I just want to add, I mean, I, I understand what Greg's saying about the miscommunication, but I also think from our end, if, if petitioners got a copy, a courtesy copy of the memos that go to us from the department heads, then they'd be in a position to come in and, you know, address them, rather than, it's difficult, I think, to sit there and, they're referring to a memo, that they don't have a copy of.
Well, they did get the memo from Gene, and they did get a copy.
You did, you got the one from the conservation agent about needing a.
I just got, I just got, I got both of those today, yes.
I think it was scanned to them, Rampco did, did receive it.
Okay, and they, yeah, they just.
Oh, okay.
Again, this is the stack of information, he said he filed, and this is what he had, and so.
All right.
And he briefed me, and that's, you know, so obviously, there's.
I gave it to him so that he would have it.
Okay.
So I had some missing information, Rampco may have it, and, you know.
And it might have, like, you know, we might not have needed a continuation, we might have just had another date.
No, if I had this ahead of time, that would have been beneficial, yes.
Yeah, right, okay, so we do provide copies when they come in?
Yeah, because we, I mean, Gene's comments, for example, she had specific questions, it was a week before.
I saw it, right, Gene's, but.
He made sure to send it to us.
I wasn't sure about Rebecca's memo, that went to them too.
It was my understanding, the only communication that him and Rotten Gun Club had received was from the conservation at the last hearing, and I believe that those were presented to Rampco, and I believe they were answered, and then the, the permit was extended. That, that's the last communication, which was what, three years ago, I believe.
Yeah, but the two plans have different ramifications for ConCon because of that buffer zone?
Yep.
That's why, so.
So we will have to continue public hearing?
I guess, I, I apologize for interrupting, but I guess I would request, you know, that they, there be something temporary, that they're allowed to continue temporarily for a timeframe, as suggested by Greg, so they're not shut down completely, if, as part of the continuation, I would just request that they.
As long as the bond is current, I don't, you know, you're supposed to have one in file.
Do you know if it is?
I, I don't know if we have a current bond on them or not, so.
The last time they renewed.
We hadn't.
Well, they had it, but they didn't have, they hadn't given it to the town, so that was the last time I said, where's the bond? Oh, I got a bond, well, where is it? And Rampco did have it, there's no doubt about it, but we didn't have, I said, the bond is supposed to be held by the town.
Correct.
And not, not in your file.
Or we could make it contingent upon the town having.
I don't know if that thing's been renewed, or has it been renewed, or expired, or it was good for five years, I have no idea, but that needs to be checked out.
Yeah, well, we can make it contingent on that.
Yeah, I do have a copy of the bond, but if the town doesn't have a copy of it, then I understand your point, so.
Chase?
Does 60 days give you enough time to do your plan and, and get what you need?
Yeah, 60 days should be sufficient to do what we need to do, yeah, because, you know, I think, I understand what Greg's looking for, and it's, it's plan updates, but I think it's reasonable plan updates, so I think we can make that happen, so.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion, then, to give an extension for 60 days? And then. Is there a second? More discussion? Okay, now, we do need a motion to continue the public hearing.
Until. But we're going to need to know when he's going to be ready, he said 60 days or 15 days.
Right. Well, I guess, could I get 90 days, then, so to make sure that we are in, that we have the meeting, we have comments, and if there is any comments back from, you know, we'll submit a plan, I imagine that Gene and Greg will review it again, and we might have to respond to those comments, so I guess if we could have 90-day extension, you know, with a filing within 60 days.
And, and Con, and Conservation Agent, if necessary.
Correct, and, right, so I think 90 days would be more appropriate to give us time to get plans and everything, and make sure we're not running into asking for another extension, another extension.
I'll amend that to 90 days. Okay, who's second?
Second.
Okay, you'll go with the amended. Okay, all in favor of the amended? Okay, now.
August 6th, August 6th would be the first meeting after the 90 days.
Maybe we should have it before the 90 days expires, because then it would be shut down.
Yeah, once it expires, you're kind of shut down, so I think we would be the.
Last meeting in July is what?
July 16th.
Okay.
Okay, time specific?
Why don't we say 6:35, I can't imagine that we have a hearing already scheduled three months in advance, so, we'll just say 6:35, we'll have a first order of business on July 16th.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, change of beneficial interest application, Drake Petroleum. Can you have that, Mary?
Yeah, I already read it once, but I'll be, I'll be good at it this time. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Drake Petroleum Company, doing business as Extramart for a change of beneficial interests with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, for premises located at 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge. In accordance with MASH General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 17, at 6:45 PM, Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, Sturbridge.
Hi, good evening.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, congratulations on your election and new position. My name is Rashim Monglik, I'm with McDermott, Tia Miller, representing Drake Petroleum, the licensee.
And I'm Meredith Patson, I'm from Drake Petroleum.
We're here seeking your approval for a change of beneficial interest, this is an upper-level management change, the chief accounting officer, Charles Rodinsky, stepped down in his position, and as such, Matthew Spencer had taken his place as chief accounting officer, so this application is to bring the license in line with that change. There are no changes to day-to-day operations, staff, training, I mean, I forget that.
Okay, any questions from the board?
There's, there is no change in the organizational structure, I, I see that Globo has several subsidiaries, and you finally get down to Drake, but they look to be, the, let's see, what was it? Globo Montello Group, was that a new subsidiary, or has that been in existence throughout the whole?
No, that's, that's part of the, the structure.
Okay, so the structure has always been.
Been.
And, and basically, all of the subsidiaries have the same officers, and, okay.
And on page two is the listing of the current ownership and the proposed ownership.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, it is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wants to ask a question, comment? Okay, is there a motion, then, to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion, then?
I'll move that we approve the change of beneficial interest for, what's the official name?
Drake Petroleum.
Drake Petroleum Company, doing business at Extramart.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the discussion on Sturbridge Green Communities Stretch Code warrant article.
I'm going to give you a chance to sit down, and then we'll hit the lights. If you could just sign the sign-in sheet, so that people, so we can have an accurate record of who you are.
I'll sign for you. Okay, could you please introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Kelly Brown, I work with the Mass Department of Energy Resources under the Green Communities Division, I'm the Central Mass Regional Coordinator. I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here tonight and talk about the Green Communities Designation and Grant Program. I am joined by Jim Berry, who is the Western Mass Regional Coordinator, and he will be doing the second part of the presentation tonight, and before he goes into depth in his part, he'll also give you a little bit of a background on himself. So, the Green Communities Designation Grant Program began back in 2010, we had our first grant round back in May, if you want to go to the next slide. So the Green Communities Grant Program offers up to $20 million annually for communities that are considered qualifying communities. A qualifying community is a designated green community, and in order for a community to be a designated green community, they need to meet five specific criteria. Before I go into a little bit about the criteria, I just want to state where the funding comes from for the Green Communities Grant Program. The funding comes from two different sources, Regi, which is the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, Cap and Trade, and Alternative Compliance Payments. Neither one is out of the general funds for the Commonwealth, both are separate sources for that up to $20 million a year. And that $20 million in grant funds goes to energy efficiency-type projects, renewables, as well as electric vehicles. I stated a little bit before, in order for a community to become a qualifying community, which means a designated green community, they need to meet five specific criteria. And the criteria goes across zoning, putting together an energy reduction plan, a fuel-efficient vehicle policy, and then tonight, we're really going to talk about the stretch energy code. I'm happy to say that Sturbridge has been working with your local regional planning agency, CMRPC, Dominique over there has been working with the community on helping to put together the energy reduction plan, which is coming along. The energy reduction plan and the fuel-efficient vehicle policy would need to be brought before the Board of Selectmen in order to move forward and be adopted. The fuel-efficient vehicle policy is a policy that has what's called mile-per-gallon ratings, it's more towards administrative-type vehicles, that would also be coming, like I said, to the Board of Selectmen, heavy-duty DPW vehicles, emergency response vehicles, those type of vehicles are actually considered exempt from the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. That's why, that's why I said it's more pertains to the administrative-type vehicles, maybe sport utility vehicles, or compact vehicles, and for each of those, we have a mile-per-gallon rating. Regarding the zoning, at the top, criterion one, I should state that Sturbridge already meets this criterion, and when, way back in 2011, when Sturbridge first looked at the Green Communities Designation Grant Program, those are some of the criterion that we already realized, Sturbridge, based on the zoning you have in place, meet criterion one and criterion two. Now, criterion five, which is minimize life cycle costs in new construction, the recommended way to do that is to adopt the stretch energy code, and that's the main point we're going to be talking about tonight, and that's what Jim Berry is going to be covering. Before we get into that topic, I just want to give a little bit of an update on how the stretch codes evolved, and a little bit on the grant funding that Sturbridge would be benefiting from if becoming a green community. Could you go to the next slide, please?
This is the next one.
So regarding grant funding, once Sturbridge becomes a designated green community, the community would receive a grant, a designation grant. The designation grant is based on a formula. Each designated green community receives $125,000 as a base amount, and then additional funds based on the per capita and the population of Sturbridge. So running the formula, the estimated grant amount for Sturbridge would be roughly $140,000. And like I said, those funds would go towards energy efficiency-type measures, upgrading the interior exterior lighting to LED, improving the weatherization in the buildings, improving mechanical systems, we also provide funding to purchase electric vehicles, those sort of things. Once a community spends that $140,000, Sturbridge would have opportunities for future grant funding. That's through the competitive grant round. We offer it once a year, and communities have up to $250,000 that they can apply for. We are currently in this year's 2018 competitive round, the last two years, we've roughly awarded about $14 million in grant funding, so there's many communities in the area that have received numerous grants. Since 2010, if you add up the designation and competitive grant funds we've awarded, it's more than $80 million in grant funding. To date, we have 210 communities across the Commonwealth that have been designated a green community. Many of your neighbors up there, Charlton, Southbridge, Dudley, Warren, Brimfield, which is, Brimfield is a new green community, so those communities on the map that are highlighted and bold and green are the new 25 designated green communities. Designation applications are due the end of October, and we look to make designation announcements the end of each year. Next slide. This is a map of the communities to date that have adopted the stretch energy code, so 217 communities across the Commonwealth. The reason you're going to see a difference on the Green Communities map of 210 versus the stretch code map of 217, are these communities, are the seven communities that are in the difference, are the ones that are looking to come in this year. In my region, I had Westboro that just recently adopted, I have Northboro, Shrewsbury, and Norfolk that are all in this group that are looking to come in, hopefully this year, and become designated. With that, I'm going to hand over the rest of the presentation to my colleague, Jim Berry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Another beautiful day out there, maybe it's going to get warm eventually.
Eventually is the word.
Eventually, right. So in 2009, 2018, Green Communities Act was created, in 2008, 2009, I was a member of Board of Selectmen in Belcher Town, Mass, and I volunteered to learn about it, because we were struggling with energy stuff in our town, in particular, a lot of old schools with old heating systems, what they call those window ventilator units that are combination heating and air, and we were in the process of replacing a few every single year, and struggling with money to figure out how we're going to pay for them, so I volunteered to learn about it, with the idea of, if we can jump through the five hoops, maybe we can get the money and get those all paid for. So I learned more and more about the Green Communities program, with the idea of maybe I could help my neighboring towns, Palmer and Granby, also get it, and in the further lessing of no good deed goes unpunished, I ended up being hired by the state to go out and go from town to town, explain to a lot more communities, so instead of being out one night a week at a Board of Selectmen meeting, I'm now out about four nights a week going to multiple Boards of Selectmen's meeting. So I thank you for your time and your patience to go through this again. Kelly mentioned that you folks had tried the stretch code once before, event, within a few slides, we're going to talk about the fact that it's no longer the same as it had been, times have changed, earlier on, it was more difficult, today, it's not quite so difficult. So one of the first things I like to talk about is that when we first got involved in Belcher Town, there was a lot of concerns about, well, what the heck is a stretch code? What does it even mean for? What does it even mean, for crying out loud? What it means is, it's a piece of the building code, the standard building code, that's energy-related and is a bit of a stretch to do. So, that's where the name came from. It was stretching into the future. There was, as you may or may not know, the standard building code, as deals with energy, is updated every three years or so. Every time they do it, it becomes a little bit more energy efficient. And so, early on, they were asking people to stretch into the future and adopt another version of the stretch code, another version of the building code that is likely to happen very soon, but do in advance because it's the stretch code that you're going to see in a few slides that actually guarantees that new construction is energy efficient. That's what the fifth criteria says. The other criteria is referred to how we as a town use energy. The fifth criteria said, "All new construction in our town will be more energy efficient than expected, as usual." The question became early on, well, how the heck are you going to make sure that new houses are energy efficient or new buildings are energy efficient? Turns out, the only way you can do it is with the building code, and the building code does evolve over time. And it turns out that they knew what the new building codes were going to look like. So, they said, "If you adopt the stretch code, if you take a stretch into the future, then you will in fact be guaranteeing that new buildings are more energy efficient than the standard ones" because they're basically looking at the future. But there was a lot of misconceptions like, well, what the heck is it? Is the stretch code new and experimental? Does the builder's going to know how to even do this? The answer is no. It wasn't new and experimental. It was based on the Energy Star for Homes program that has been in existence for many years. I was surprised as a selectman, having dealt with Boston on numerous occasions and seeing new programs come out. Did they invent a brand-new program? No, actually, they piggybacked on a system that was in existence, is still in existence. So, if you follow the stretch code and follow the Energy Star for Homes program, you're eligible for federal funds to help pay for making it more energy efficient. Another concern about the stretch code was that it would be tight and unhealthy because if we're talking about making houses more energy efficient and saving the heat that's in the house, one of the first things you do is say, "I want to make sure that the wind is not blowing in and out, or the heat's not going out," right? So, many of you probably aren't old enough to remember back in the '70s when we had our first oil crisis and we could not buy gasoline at the gas station unless our license plate ended on an even number on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and an odd number on Tuesday and Thursday. And there was some real concern about us importing oil from folks that didn't like us. And there was a lot of effort placed on, how can we reduce our use of oil? And one of the things that people did is, let's put plastic under the sheet rock when we build a house. Turns out, that was a bad idea. That ended up with mold and mildew, and they were tight and unhealthy homes. But since then, in the 20, 30 years that have elapsed, we have learned a lot more about building science. We've learned about how to ventilate a house, and we've had more products invented. Tyvek didn't exist 20, 30 years ago, and so people used plastic, which was not a good idea. Now, there are plenty of places and ways to make a home energy efficient and not be too tight and unhealthy. So, that was a concern early on, a few years ago. You're going to make people sick? The answer is no. You're not going to make people sick. A third concern that people had, especially out where I live, where we don't have natural gas, most people eat with oil heat. One of the concerns was, it's going to be difficult to make an energy-efficient home using an oil-heated system because, as you probably know, oil burner is not all that efficient in terms of generating heat based on fuel. It's basically 87% is a standard efficiency for a decent oil burner, which means $13 out of every 100 you spend goes right up the chimney. Well, what we're trying to do is get less fuel up the chimney, so we're looking for more efficient systems. So, propane is easier to make an energy-efficient home with propane than it is with oil, but it's not impossible. So, some people are concerned, you're going to cut out the oil business. The answer is no. You have to think a little bit more about how you're going to do the energy efficiency if you're going to use oil, but it's not impossible. And another concern that people had was that town residents will be required to update their existing homes. If we pass the stretch code, and I saw my house, am I going to have to make it energy efficient? And some of this concern, again, relates to some of us who live out in the boon docks where we have our own septic systems and well systems. And there's a thing called Title V in Massachusetts that says, if you sell your home, your septic system has to pass the most latest restrictions and requirements and regulations for septic systems before you can sell it. So, many people thought, well, if I passed the stretch code, am I handcuffing my residents? The answer is no. It's never been that case. It's always been a concern and a question mark in the back of people's minds, based on other things that have happened. But it's never been the case that existing homes have to meet the stringent requirements of the stretch code. And in fact, the most recent version of the stretch code explicitly defines that it's applicable to new residential construction and new commercial construction. So, if you have an existing home, you put an addition on, or renovation, or repairs, it has nothing to do with the stretch code. So, those are some of the misconceptions that came out. And as I mentioned, the building codes evolve over time. And eight or nine years ago, the stretch code really was a stretch because it was looking for more insulation in the walls, more insulation in the ceilings, better heating systems. But on July 1st of 2014, the standard building code was revised. The stretch code was not revised, and the standard building code picked up and required many of the things that the stretch code was anticipating. So, on July 1 of 2014, the IECC 2012, the International Energy Code Commission of 2012, took effect in Massachusetts, and all new homes had to be more energy efficient. They had to have more insulation than they had previously. They had to have better windows than they had previously. They had to have blower door tests. What the heck is a blower door test? They're going to close off the doors and windows and put the house under pressure and measure how tight the house is because we want to make sure the house is not too tight, but also that it's tight enough. In 2014, the standard code said, "The whole exterior of a house has to be air-sealed." This is a big change for many builders, similar to the change a few years earlier from the people who had adopted the stretch code because it was a bit of a stretch. But on July 1 of 2014, the standard building code almost caught up with the stretch code. So, your town, any new houses built in the last three years in your town have had more insulation than they used to have to have, better windows, and better heating systems, and the blower door test. So, we said that the standard code basically caught up with it. And then, in January of 2017, the standard building code and the stretch code changed once more. The standard building code became almost absolutely identical to the stretch code. The stretch code became simpler in its language. There was four, or five, or six pages of stuff you had to do to become a stretch code in the past. They made it very simpler. They simply said, "Go to the standard building code and follow the second chapter that relates to performance rather than the prescriptive." I could spend hours talking to you in great detail about what this means. I have no intention of doing that unless you want to interrupt me and ask for the nuts and bolts and details. I know the building inspector's here who can also answer some more detailed questions for you. But the short story is that the difference today between a stretch code home, a home built in a stretch code community versus a very similar home built in your community which is not the stretch code, the basic difference is, in a stretch code town, you have to have a home energy rating services expert be involved with it and prove that the energy in the house, that the whole house as a package, is energy efficient. It costs a little bit more to hire that person, but the savings more than makes up for it. Just a little picture to show you what we're talking about. We're not talking about everything in the house. We're not talking about plumbing. We're not talking about fire extinguishers. We're talking about standard stuff that relates to energy. So, that's just a list of stuff we're doing. So, the criteria five that says the new buildings must be more energy efficient, and the path to do that is through the BBRS stretch code. The legislation that created the Green Communities did not explicitly define the building code or the stretch code. They just said, "You got to make sure everything's more energy efficient." So, if towns could provide to us another method of ensuring that homes are more energy efficient than standard without using the stretch code, we're happy to listen to it. But in the seven, eight years we've been doing this, no one has come up with a better idea. Boston came up with a couple of ideas. Worcester came up with a couple of ideas. But they were more of, "You really ought to do this, and we really suggest you do this." Because the only way you can enforce how a building is made is through the building code. But again, we're welcome to listen to it if you have another idea. But at this point, 200 towns have done it, and it has been, it has been working. The idea is that it's going to measure performance rather than simply be prescriptive. So, the standard building code has two paths. If you're going to go build a house, you have to follow the building code. The building code says, you can either go down this path, which is the performance path, or this other path, which is a prescriptive path. The prescriptive path is, just follow the prescription. Put R-19 in the walls, R-37 in the ceiling. The building inspector comes and looks at it, checks it off the list. Everything's hunky-dory. You follow the prescription. People in your town can do that. If you're a stretch code town, you have to follow the performance path, which is also in the building code. And it takes a holistic view of the whole house. It's going to measure the performance of the insulation. It's going to measure the performance of the air ceiling. It's going to measure the performance of ducts. So, it's going to take a more broad picture of the whole house. So, you have to do that with the, with the stretch code town. And the process, let's Google one more slide. I always get these two out of sync. I can never know which one to talk about first. But the process in the stretch code is geared upon a number, a score. Like, we get a miles-per-gallon on a vehicle, and you know that based on the mile-per-gallon whether one vehicle is doing better energy-wise than another. There's a thing for a house similar. It's called a HERS score, Home Energy Rating Systems Number. So, that thermometer on the right side of the screen there, about two-thirds way up, that says standard home, and it has 100 there, that's the, that's the starting point. If you built a home to the 2006 building code, namely, two-by-four walls, R-13 insulation, do it by the book, by the 2006 code, you would get a score of 100. But as we start doing better than that, the thermometer starts dropping. So, you do two-by-six walls instead of two-by-four walls. You do better rafters and more insulation in the attic. You do a better heating system than the old minimum requirements. And as you start making choices between you and the HERS inspector, so if you go back one page, thank you. So, you're going to talk with a HERS inspector before you even pull the building permit. You're going to hire a new subcontractor. So, you have a plumbing subcontractor, an electrical subcontractor. Now, you have an energy subcontractor you're going to hire. You're going to talk to this person before you build a home, before you pull the building permit. You're going to talk about what kind of a house you're going to make. Well, it's 2,000 square feet. Is that one-story or two-stories? It's two-stories. What kind of windows are you planning on using? Well, we're going to use Anderson Model 5527 dash. What kind of, so while you're talking about the home you're building, the home energy rating services expert is entering information into a computer, which is comparing it to the 2006 requirements and dropping that thermometer. So, as you use more insulation, the thermometer drops. As you use better windows, the thermometer drops. So, you make a trade-offs with your builder, with your expert, to find out what things might we do, pluses and minuses, to get that number down to the right score. And you do that computer modeling before you even get the building permit. This home energy rating services expert is also going to do inspections. So, the building inspector is not going to do less work, although some could, because a HERS raider is responsible for checking that the energy features of the home meet the requirements of the building code and the stretch code. So, there's some in-process inspections. Before the sheet rock goes on, they go out and they look at the insulation. They look at the windows. They look at the quality of the windows. They look at where the window's done well. Is the air ceiling done well? They do duct blaster testing. So, if you've got ductwork in there, they're going to put them under pressure and see if they're leaking. So, this outside expert that you're going to pay a little bit more money to hire is going to be involved in the process and ensure that the house is built correctly. And there's the final blower door test. There's a picture of the gentleman doing the blower door test. And again, eight years ago, this was pretty unusual, and some builders were saying, "What the heck? How am I, what am I going to do if it fails?" But now, your builders have to do this in your town anyway, stretch code or not stretch code. This is a requirement. So, what's the cost? We have a whole bunch of cost-benefit analysis. I'm going to go through just a couple of them for you. We can go as many, through as many as you want. I just want to touch the highlights on you so you can see. Yes, there is an additional cost, but yes, there is some payback on those costs. So, the first sample we're going to show you is a house that is built with natural gas heat because gas and propane are very energy efficient. So, this is, there's two pages to each of these cost analysis. This first page is the summary page. We talk about, up in the top, it says it's a 2,500-square-foot, three-bedroom home in the Worcester area. It's going to be built with propane heater, excuse me, natural gas heaters. The target, that thermometer we're trying to get to in the upper-left-hand corner, the target is 55 on the thermometer. This standard home that this builder is building without the stretch code would be about a 66, which is a pretty good house already. But we need to get that number down, and it's going to cost us some money. So, we go to the next page. We'll see, these are the things that were explicitly changed to be more energy efficient and cost more money. So, the very first line shows that the HERS rating, hiring someone to be involved in the process, costs another $500. The second line says, "We're going to use slightly better windows, and we're going to spend another $500 on better windows to drop that thermometer down a little bit more." Also, the third line shows that the heating, the standard gas furnace is about 92% efficient, which is pretty good. That's a pretty good efficient furnace. But for another $300, you can get a 96% efficient fuel furnace, which means less money is going up the chimney, and when we're looking at the thermometer, the thermometer is dropping better. Similarly, the cooling system, they spent a little bit more money on the cooling system. The domestic hot water is a big, I don't want to say big waste of energy because I enjoy a hot shower myself, but seriously, heating hot water to take a shower takes a lot of energy. And so, they put in a better tankless hot water heater, but it was $700 more money to do. But again, that helped to drop that thermometer down, which is what we're trying to do. And then, they make sure that the duct leakage was a little bit tighter, so they spent another $200 on that. So, the whole grand total for this particular house, to go from a standard-built house not in the stretch code to one that is in the stretch code was about $2,600. Before we go back, I just want to highlight the fact that we did not change air infiltration. We did not make it more airtight. We did not change the foundation insulation, the floor insulation, the walls. All those bottom half of that chart there, there was no changes made. We changed primarily equipment to make it more energy efficient. If we go back to the first page, we'll see, so there's the, in red, the $2,600 more money to build this house. But in that green column in the middle, utility rebates. I mentioned that there's the Energy Star rebates from the federal government. Those aren't listed here. What you're seeing here is the Mass Save rebates. I'm sure you're all aware of the Mass Save program. You all have the ability to get a Mass Save energy audit on your home. They will come to your house and do an energy audit and help you figure out how to save energy in your house. They have a separate program for brand-new construction of homes. And if you do a good job of building a house that's energy efficient, they give you cash to help you pay for it. So, in this case, the $2,600 extra cost for the stretch code was offset by the $1,600 rebate from the Mass Save program, leading a net extra cost of about $1,000 bucks more to build this house to meet the stretch code. And if you did a 10% down payment, then we're talking another $100 to the down payment. We're talking maybe another $77 a year in the mortgage. If we took that 100, if we took that $1,000 and just added it to sale price and then added it to the mortgage, we're talking about $100 a year extra in the mortgage. But we're saving, again, that green column in the middle, we're saving $200 a year in energy costs because we have a better-built home. So, again, with propane, gasoline, we were saving money year after year after year. Propane, this is a separate example of propane. The numbers are almost identical because if we go to the next page, you'll see that the, the gas heater for propane versus natural gas is almost identical. So, I'm not going to go in great detail on this one. We'll jump to the, to the oil because some people are, still like to do oil. This, this does cost more to get the stretch code with oil. We're going to go to the next page to see the details of it. So, again, these are the list of items that we changed to, and it's going to cost us more money in order to meet the stretch code. The first-line item is to pay extra for this expert to be involved in the process. The second line is slightly more money for better windows. The third line is a big expense here. That's where the heating system, notice it was an 83% oil furnace, was a standard one. They were able to find one that was 96% oil-efficient. You're not going to go down the street and find one of those. They don't, they don't stock those. That's a pretty expensive, unusual oil furnace. But you can get one, and it's going to cost you an extra $2,000 bucks for it. So, if we go back to the first page, you'll see, again, there's an extra cost here to get to the stretch code with an oil-heated home. You're still getting a $1,600 rebate from the state with the Mass Save program, but you've got a $2,400 extra cost to make it, which is another $200 a year in the mortgage. But again, that green column shows almost $700 in annual savings because you're saving a lot of oil because you went to a much more oil-efficient system. So, again, cash out of pocket for the homeowner, year one, year two, year three, offsets is higher than more cash in the pocket than the extra money you're spending on the mortgage to meet the stretch code. So, again, we have a variety of models. We have, we have one for electric heat. We have air-source heat pumps. Here's a calculation if I had to get the incentives, if you wanted to go through in great detail on that. There's a commercial piece of the stretch code. I'm not sure if we do a lot of new commercial building in this town. Large commercial, new commercial buildings are impacted by stretch code, but they're only for those that are over 100,000 square feet, which is a pretty big commercial building. Again, we can go in greater detail if you want. There's some documentation that's required. There's some documentation that's required. As Kelly mentioned before, when we first started this, we weren't sure who would say yes, besides Cambridge and Amherst. Turns out quite a few towns were very much interested in getting additional help to do some large scale projects in town that they would have to do anyway. In Belchtown, we would have had to replace these heaters anyway. And we would have done it slowly but surely, and in the process, we were still spending a lot of money on oil. But we took the money and we replaced a bunch of heating systems and switched fuels in some cases. So our annual budget for energy is 25% less this year than it was five years ago, our energy budget. So if you take your budget for next year and look at your energy bills, your projected energy bills, and think about in a couple of years, we could reduce this by 20% using grant money from the state to do the kind of changes we're going to use in equipment anyway. Well, a lot of towns said, you know, that's something we should probably consider. So that's the existing map of the towns. The summary is the stretch code is no longer much of a stretch. In 2009, 2009, quite a few towns said, you know what? I'm not sure about this. Why don't we just say no and wait to see what happens? And what happened is the standard building code kind of caught up with the stretch, so it became less of a stretch. The neighboring towns, many neighboring towns have done it around. Many towns said to me, I don't want to do it because I want the builders to still come to my town because I need the new growth, right? Part of my budgeting process is guessing new houses and new budget, new growth. Like that's a good number to have. I don't want builders to go someplace else and build. Turns out that builders were not avoiding stretch code towns. Turns out that builders like to build green. Turns out that buyers, younger folks buying houses are buying green. So it turns out that the stretch code is not much of a stretch. It has not been a problem to builders, it has not been a problem to realtors. You do need a HERS raider involvement, but you need one for the standard building code also to do the blower door test. There is an extra cost for a stretch code home, but it's mostly offset by the rebate programs and the money saved. And the fourth point I need to stress because I often forget to do it, additions, renovations and repairs to existing homes are exempt. So you have an existing home and you're putting an addition on, don't worry about it. If you're putting a renovation on, don't worry about it. If you're putting a new window in the bathroom, like my wife said I should have done years ago, don't worry about it. It's going to be the standard building code, you don't have to do the stretch code. Nice. And there's our title page with some more information if you need. Now again, I went through that pretty quickly and I'm happy to back up and go through whatever else you want in greater detail.
Okay, thank you both. Questions from the board?
Mary?
I have one. Thank you. You know, on one of the slides, you said what the cost was going to be. So of hiring the energy subcontractor professional. I think it's further back. I said it was $1,300 to.
Right. Yep.
Yep.
Keep going.
So let me see if I understand this. The regular, the regular building code has implemented much of these energy requirements that the stretch code did.
Correct.
But we, it will require a new subcontractor to come in and test their performance.
Correct.
Okay. Now, how did you, how did you arrive at the 1,300 to 1,700? Because I'm just envisioning, that's determined by the private sector, right? So if the subcontractor in a more affluent town wants to charge 5,000, there's nothing in place to stop that type of, am I correct?
You're absolutely right. So what I suggest to new builders who are new to this whole process is just as you have to find a good plumbing subcontractor that can do the work at a good price, and there's lots of plumbing subcontractors out there that you could hire, some are more expensive than others, some are better than others. Similarly, there's plenty of insulation subcontractors out there that you could hire. There are multiple HERS raiders. When we first started 10 years ago, there wasn't so many of them. Today, there's a lot of them based on the map of the state with more and more towns adopting the stretch code. There are more and more choices for hiring a subcontractor. So we use 1,600 as an average. If you, if you call a couple HERS raiders and say, I'm building a standard sized home, what's a typical contract? 1,500 bucks, 2,000 bucks is what they'll tell you. Now, when we looked at the actual cost analysis, you'll notice that we had even, we had a smaller number there. That's because even without the stretch code, you have to find one of these folks to do the blower door test at the end and/or duct testing. Again, five years ago, you didn't have to. So this extra cost for a HERS raider was additional cost completely. Now about half of this extra cost is based on the stretch code because you would have needed to find this person to do some of the work anyway.
I understand. So when you came up with that range, you actually use the communities that are already doing it, that these are actual costs? You had a methodology to come up with a 1,600 to 3,000 range?
So we use a subcontractor to help us do these analysis. As you may not know, Governor Baker said, we're not doing any new regulations without doing a cost benefit analysis on this. And so when the stretch code was about to be revised and revamped, it was delayed a whole year while they did some of this analysis. We hired ICE.
ICF International.
Who, they're a group that administers the Mass Save.
New Residential Construction Program. So the rebates and stuff that he was speaking to come, they administer that program on behalf of the PAs, which are the, which are the utilities in essence. And so they were able to pull that data from the program and see what they were charging for HERS raiders. And that's where we were able to.
And equipment, so.
Thank you. And then just my other question is the rebates. Those could go away at any time though, right? I mean, those are state rebates. How many years have we had state rebates? And have they gone down in time? Because I know like the solar points changed over the years and are they ever threatened to come out of the budget or?
So there's a couple of things. The Mass Save Program is changed every three years. The utility, so the Mass Save Program is basically funded in a bunch of different ways. On your electric bill, there's a .000001 cent for, .00005 cents for renewable energy. There's a .00126 cents per kilowatt hour for energy efficiency. The Reggie Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative that Kelly mentioned earlier, which is, that's a program where nine states in New England have all signed a document that says, if you make electricity and you put it into our area, if you put junk in the air, you're going to pay us for that. So it's a regional greenhouse gas initiative. It's paying, it's basically cap and trade. Massachusetts takes lots of money in from people who make electricity and sell it into our world. 80% of that money goes to the whole Mass Save Program. The Mass Save Program is kind of administered by the PAs, PAs, program administrators, the investor owned utilities, because they collect that money and ship it off to us. So they're, the Mass Save Program does evolve over time. That money comes in, that part is a standard budget. If the governor says, I need more money for the state police, he can't just shift money from here to there. You have to change the legislation because the legislation explicitly defines where this money comes from. Do these rebates change? Yeah, every three years, they talk about what's better. And as things become more standard, as standard windows become, as really, really good windows become standard, maybe the rebate on that window goes down and they offer an incentive on a better window. So these things do change over time. I can't predict what will happen next year. I will tell you, in the past, the rebates have been fairly stable. I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have the numbers on.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, since we've had the program, there has been rebates available to answer what you're asking. Have they evolved as the programs evolved and the building codes have changed? Yes, I mean, even with the new rollout of the stretch code shortly after, they kind of tweaked the program and on the cost analysis, they'll even say that they're looking a little more on the, not just upfront rebates, but also the production a little bit on the equipment that's put in to make sure that it's actually generating the savings that are behind these programs as well.
So there's no guarantee that the money will be there forever? There's no guarantee that I'll be here tomorrow?
No, no, I get, so did my last and then I'll let other people ask questions. I just have one more. So with a homeowner, is it the builder? Because I can just envision a lot of homeowners having no idea how to go and apply for rebates, you know, when they have a stretch code house.
So the Home Energy, so I actually went through this process for my own home. So I can speak from experience where the HERS raider really is generally a sub to the builder and the HERS raider really fills out a lot, along with the modeling, it does a lot of the paperwork and everything else through the program. That's part of their job.
They do the paperwork for the homeowner?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And they really are doing it for the builder in a lot of sense too, because most of the time, a lot of the time, the builders are building the home and then handing it off to the homeowners maybe at closing on a spec. So in those cases where a lot of those situations, it's really the HERS raider doing it for the builder in that essence, not even the homeowner.
Questions from anyone else? Mike?
Your analysis of the, of the costs indicate that this would be a benefit long term for, for homeowners, new homeowners in the community.
Yes, sir.
And the, you know, back in the 1980s, you said 30 years ago, there wasn't Tyvek, but there was Tyvek available.
In the 80s?
And there was, you know, a lot of homes, new homes were being built with, because of energy requirements and the high cost of oil, a lot of homes were being built very energy efficiently. Many of them without the, the polyethylene behind the walls. But yeah, I just, you know, it was available back then.
Sure.
You know, I had worked on several Energy Star homes back, back at that, that time. So it, and it's unfortunate that the state building code was relaxed after, after that. And, but there were energy requirements in the building code 30 years ago that were more stringent than they were 20 years ago.
Ah, thank you.
So, you know, just, I think, I think it's a good thing for the town to, to be a green community in general. That will give us incentive to, to do things with our town buildings that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. Maybe, you know, get some, some more energy efficient motors on some of the heating systems in our buildings and upgrade our heating and cooling systems and that's, that sort of thing. And maybe do some insulating. So I, you know, the grant program is, would be a great incentive for, for the Board of Selectment alone. And I think it will not affect housing production in the community at all. And you have stated that here, that it may increase housing production because it makes the newer homes more valuable to the buyers. So thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a few questions. I mean, it seems like propane and gas heat is what you're trying to push people towards. It's more efficient. And I was wondering with your study, Sturbridge does not have gas lines in the, in the ground. And in order for a resident to get that propane heat in a competitive rate, they have to go out and buy their own propane tank and install it in the ground in order to get a decent rate rather than renting the tank and paying more of a premium. And I just was wondering if that was in your study at all? You know, the higher cost of propane unless they buy that tank.
Yes, I don't know if the cost of the tank is part of it. I will tell you that clearly if you have an oil tank, you're going to buy that oil tank. And if you have a propane heated system, you don't need a masonry chimney. So that's one of the savings in terms of trade offs of total cost for energy versus material. But I honestly, I don't know if this cash analysis includes the price of a tank or not. I don't know that.
You know, I just, I have a lot of faith in the updated building codes and I know how expensive it is to build a house. I hate to burden residents. You know, you hope they go green, but I just hate to tell them to, you know?
Well, it all boils down to a town meeting vote anyways. The people will decide. I know the last time this came up, there was a lot of kind of fear. People thought that, you know, if you did the new window over the sink or if you put an addition on, you'd get whacked and everything. So I'm glad you emphasized that point.
Yep.
Well, it has changed over the years, over the last five or six years. The, the program has, the stretch code has, has changed, or the difference between the building code and the stretch code has changed significantly. So we're, we're building houses that are almost exactly stretch code houses as it is. And, you know, there's no, I mean, the presentation here, I don't think favored one energy source or another. You said you had, you know, data on, in addition to oil and gas. You also had, you know, like.
Yeah, air source heat pumps, yep.
Yeah. So, so, and that, you know, that may be the wave of the future too.
Yeah, I think it probably is, yeah.
Because the efficiency on, on some of those, I noticed you had a, for a water heater, you had a heat pump type water heater in with the oil system. And that, you know, the, the technology is getting so much better because, in part because the, the code has changed so much. And we've got a lot, a lot more options than we did 30 years ago.
Right.
You know, admittedly, and I, I don't think, I think, you know, we, there's a lot of, a lot of things that will be very different in the future as far as the way homes are heated and energy is consumed. And I, I think, I don't think this is forcing people to, to, to be, to spend more money. I think it's actually in the long run, saving people money.
Can I ask, Priscilla, do you have a, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Are you done, Chase, with your question? Oh, okay. You know, when you have, this is a little off subject because I know you're mostly talking about the stretch code. So I, maybe I should direct it to you, but you have the five criteria to be considered a green community. So we have to satisfy all five to get the 140,000. We're not going to get it just by virtue of adopting a stretch code.
Yep, so basically, that initial thing was in order to be eligible for the up to 20 million, which would include that first grant of 140,000, you have to become a qualifying.
Right.
And that means a designated green community meeting all five.
All five, okay. So is that an annual grant of 140 or is that a one time grant of 140?
So we've always said from the beginning that every community gets designated, just, you just said that's, you know, as Jim would put, five hoops to jump through. We want to make sure that every community that meets those five criteria gets a grant. So that's the designation grant, that it was estimated of 140,000. All communities, once you've spent that designation grant, have opportunities for future funding through what's called the competitive grant round. That is available annually. So Sturbridge would have an opportunity after they spent the designation grant for annual grants, but it's just more in a competitive and that's actually up to $250,000 that the town could apply for.
Okay, so the 140 is a one time grant by becoming a qualified community. And then it would require us every year to apply for a grant?
Yes, so one of the questions I generally get is how often would a town be able to come in and apply for future grants? And the real answer is it's how fast the community can complete the grants that they've been awarded. Because you can't apply for more grants until you've finished the projects and the grants that you've already been given. So yes, we do have some communities that have come in on an annual basis and then we have other communities that take a little longer depending on the type of projects they pick.
I get it. So the third criterion, an energy reduction plan?
Yep.
Like what is involved in that? And then my second question is, let's say we come up with a plan and what was it over five years to reduce by, was it 20%?
25%.
Oh, I thought it was 20.
Yeah, it's 20%.
It's 20, okay. Let's say at the end of five years, we have this great plan, but it didn't end up in terms of performance reducing. We don't have to give back any grant that we were given by adopting, by following those five criteria.
So I think you asked a couple of questions. So the first one is the energy reduction plan. The way to think about it is it's two parts. It's first putting together your baseline, which is putting all your building usage, street lights, vehicles, combining it all and seeing how much the Sturbridge consumes. And then taking that baseline, which would be the whole year, and figuring out a plan, like you said, to reduce it by 20%. And how you do that is by identifying opportunities in each building, whether it's, you know, motors as been mentioned before, heating, upgrading the heating systems, improving the weatherization. And I should say, both of those things Sturbridge is working on now. Leon and Gina are working with Dominique over at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. You also have a vendor that's been coming in and looking at some of the buildings to see opportunity just to make sure you can get to that 20%. Then once you put that plan together, what would happen is you would, obviously, I'd look to see those measures, put them in place. And after five years, we really give you five years to complete the measures and then a sixth year to see if you get that 20%. Over the course of those five years, we're communicating a lot and we would be tracking your progress. And if after the six years, you would not have to give any funds back if you didn't hit the 20%, we have communities that have taken a little longer to do so. And basically what would happen is we would just try to work with the community and make sure that, what I like to say is diversifying your projects. It takes a lot more lighting projects to get to 20% than it does on the heating side. And we would just work with you to try to make sure you were looking at it. And we would just work with you to try to make sure you were looking at it basically holistically.
So you'd approve the plan?
Yep.
And you wouldn't wait for results to, to get that initial grant?
No, 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 you get approved based on just the plan and the roadmap.
Right, okay.
And then we give you five years to implement the measures and then a sixth year to see if you hit the twenty percent. And even at that sixth year, if you haven't seen the twenty percent savings, we'd still be working with you.
And the plan is, the plan is just a plan. It's not in concrete.
It's a roadmap, right.
So often, after two or three years, you say, holy moly, we just gotta, we're not gonna do that building anymore. We're gonna cancel it.
Yep, yeah.
So...
And, and to that point, I mean, even changing plans or priority, when, we've had the program around since two thousand and ten. So a great example I like to give is when the first communities came in, there wasn't LED lighting. You know, they weren't do, upgrading the lighting interior, exterior. That's just a example of the type of, you know, something, a technology that's come out in the last few years. So a lot of those communities that had that plan, they're updating their plan to include that type of lighting, to converting their streetlights. So the plan is evolving and we would, it's not, you have to stick to that thing. We just wanna make sure when you come in that there's a plan in place where you can get to twenty percent.
Have there been any communities that have adopted the stretch code and then found it too cumbersome and then later, um, voted to go back to the regular building code?
Nope, so we've, um, all two hundred and seventeen communities, those are the ones that have adopted to date. Um, and I just should reiterate, just cause it's a good point, that similar to how you adopt the code, you can un-adopt the code. So if a community at the local level wasn't happy with the future version, you can always bring it back to town meeting and un-adopt it so you have that local control.
And you don't have to give the insulation back.
I know, I keep saying the doomsday, but I just like to understand. There's always an upside, but you gotta try to see the downside to...
No, good questions.
Okay, now, Jean, oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
Okay, I just, just want, uh, you made a comment about the lighting is usually not the low, low hanging fruit in the community. It's, uh, it's usually things like, uh, like variable speed drives on a sewage pumping station needs, needs a, a new motor or something. And, and those are, uh, you know, low hanging fruit that, uh, that we can get twenty percent reduction very quickly with. So that, that's the type of thing they would probably be going after, things like that, rather than, uh, than lighting initially. But ultimately, the goal would be to get LED lighting as much as possible and things like that. But you go after the, the, the things that, that will reduce our energy consumption, uh, the quickest, uh, first.
Yeah, well, with input.
Yeah.
All ideas will be looked at. Um, Jean and Nelson, now, did you come to get educated or would you like to add anything?
They may be more.
Okay, Nelson, can you come up and use one of the mics, please? It's for the TV.
I'll put you right in the middle here.
When, uh, when we did the survey, I was with them and, uh, one of the schools they did was Burgess, cause we own Burgess School. My question is, where does the district school falls into, cause it's, it's huge and it would be, you know, as far as, as reduction, it would be huge for us, but we don't really own a school. Do they take like a percentage of it, or how would that work?
Yep, so when it comes to regional school districts, the way it would work is it would be, um, the, based on the percentage of funding contributed by the town into the district is the percent of energy that would be included into the energy reduction plan. Um, the only difference is depends on if, if you're looking at like an elementary school, which is predominantly Sturbridge students versus like a high school.
So they're gonna do a survey of the district school eventually, cause they didn't do it the other day, almost.
Jean?
It's just the elementary school, correct?
Right.
Yep, so I think that was decided just to look at the elementary school for right now.
So you're not required to include regional school districts into your plan? Not required? Some to- some towns say, you know what, I got enough of my own problems to deal with. I'm not gonna deal with that high school over there. I'm only paying twelve percent on it. I'm gonna do that some other day. And then two or three years later, they might decide to add that regional school district back into the portfolio after I spent some money in their buildings, and then start spending money in that later. So it's not a all or nothing on day one, although some towns know right away, as Kelly pointed out, if I have an elementary school in my town and ninety-nine percent of students are, are mine, I might include that right away and start spending money on that building right away, because if it's not in the portfolio, then you can't spend money on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you do have a choice of include it or not, if it's a residential school. If it's your own building, you don't have a choice. If it's your own fire department, it's gotta be in the list. If it's a regional school that's in another town, well, you can think about it.
Yeah, because our elementary school is all Sturbridge students. We don't have school choice at the elementary school, so...
Yep, and so my understanding is the elementary school is being looked at and that was the school that was chosen.
That's my question, is the elementary school is fairly new, so the reduction isn't gonna be really high, whereas junior high and high school, a lot of it's old, and reduction would be high, so I would think we'd want to include them, but...
Well, not at, not at the stat.
We, we wouldn't have control over whether they would wanna follow it.
Right, right.
When there's five towns involved and the other towns might not be part of a green community. That's the problem.
Yeah, so it gets a little... A little complicated on the regional school side, but all you would have to do, so as a town, the town gets to choose what schools they want to include. If you did wanna include the junior, um, high and the high school, it would require, um, so when you include the schools in a regional school district, it does require a, a letter from the superintendent adopting, um, the energy reduction plan. Obviously, we would want that support behind it because they're built, the measures at the buildings include in the regional school district. It doesn't require having the other towns be a green community. It's really just the choice of Sturbridge to decide, do we wanna include the junior high and high school so we can ask for funding down the road? That's it. It doesn't require other town votes in other towns. It doesn't require them...
Nobody requires the compliance of the superintendent.
It does, so that's...
So I mean, that, so that, in an affected, you know what I'm trying to say? In effect, it does, cause she will go to the school committee and there we have it.
Okay, so we do have, we do have other districts that just have one town, but, I mean, it is, it is educating the superintendent and seeing if they wanna be on board. You're correct.
Right.
Yeah, but, no, Jean?
Leon and I discussed it and we felt it best just to include Burgess at this time, um, because of that reason that, you know, we don't necessarily have control that they would want to or would be able to make the improvements necessary to reach the twenty percent. And I think the other way to look at it, it's a twenty percent reduction of whatever we're including. So we say the school's new, but I think it was occupied and it's almost, I bet it's going on ten years probably, it seems to be.
Maybe twelve.
It was a couple of years after I started here. So I think that there's room for improvement. Even when the LED light bulbs came out, if you changed them at home, you saw a drastic reduction in your electricity bill. And I think that's...
But even still, we, we have plenty of projects that we can do on the town side for the first phase of this project that if we were going to move forward and do a competitive grant down the road with maybe some of our other communities in the regional school district, I think that that might make it, you know, that might be the time to do something like that.
Okay, questions answered. Nelson?
My other question is, um, on that, where they did the survey with the costs and stuff, uh, one of the things is, uh, it wasn't, I didn't see it in there, but it does add to, cause I've seen it in homes that I've inspected, is ventilation. They didn't show it in there, but they, they need it now, because the homes are so tight. It, it could be twelve hours out of twenty-four, it could be twenty-four hours out of twenty-four. And I have to research it quite a bit when I go and do my inspections on the new homes.
Are you saying that's an additional cost that wasn't accounted for?
Well, I'm not sure.
Well, so...
I understand the question. Is that what you were asking, Nelson?
Yes.
Oh.
So, um, five years ago, you didn't need to have, um, mechanical ventilation in a new home. You didn't have to, because homes were, I don't wanna say drafty, but there was ventilation kinda happened. In two thousand and fourteen, um, when the regulation was that all, that the, the complete envelope had to be air sealed, completely air sealed, and they had to have a blower door test with a low number saying it can't be too drafty or leaky, it automatically required mechanical ventilation in a non-stretch code home. So all, all homes today being built in your town, whether or without the stretch code, have a fan in the bathroom that's probably on twenty-four seven, or it's on twenty minutes out of sixty, there's timers. These cost a little bit more, more in energy to run that small electric motor, but the energy that you're spending is much less than the energy you're saving. We don't include it on the extra cost charge, because today you have to have it whether or not you're a stretch code because of the air, because of the air, air changes per hour being only three with a blower door test.
Okay, anything else from the board then? Jean, you all set?
I am thinking.
A couple of other things, um, as far as, uh, just to make it known to the public so there isn't a misunderstanding, new homes today, probably eighty percent of them have plastic on the walls and the inside.
Really?
But, yes, but they do have, you know, you have prop vent, you have breathing, you have, uh, moisture guide boards. I mean, there's, 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 there's a lot to it. And, uh, the other thing I wanna say for all the building inspectors and commissioners in the world, um, whether it's prescriptive or, or, or performance, I, I think every builder inspector does his inspections and inspects it, you know what I mean? So when you say you get a better home, you get a good home, but I wouldn't say it's better in a respect, almost like, like people aren't inspecting, cause I, I took that personally. I really did. And I think that's, that's not true at all.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think it was intended that way.
No, I didn't mean to imply that you weren't doing your job, sorry. I, I'm, I'll, I'll be far more careful in the future in how I say that. I'm sorry.
Okay, now, um, depending on how the board feels about this, if we're in favor of it, um, we can make a motion to have Leon move to get a warrant article ready. And there's a couple of samples written, so he doesn't have to reinvent the wheel. So, does somebody wanna make a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to, um, to, uh...
Have Leon move forward?
Have Leon mo- move forward with, uh, with, uh, uh, a, an article for, for town meeting to see if the voters will accept a, um, uh, stretch co- the stretch code, uh, uh, for, uh, for the purpose of, uh, the town, uh, becoming a green community.
Right, and it's written right here, so, and then somebody at town meeting will have to explain it. Very good. Is there a second to the motion? I'll, I'll second it. Any more discussion? Mary?
I, I mean, I'm kind of of two minds. I, I think it would be good to become green. I was a little concerned with what kinda additional cost it, it would put on a homeowner with this additional energy professional. And, uh, I think Chase had other concerns too about favoring one kind of heating system. But, um, I, 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 I think it should go before the voters, so I, I would agree to the warrant article. But before, um, I hope we take a vote in the future about whether we support it, cause I'd like to research it a little bit more.
We will, we, we do that on all the warrant articles.
Okay, I, I thought, so this is just to move forward to, to...
To have Leon write it, the warrant article. That's all it is.
Just to work on a warrant article.
Have another discussion about whether we support it.
Yeah, we're not...
We'll even have to take a vote after we read the warrant article, whether we even want to place it.
I get it, okay.
So we're just, we're just putting it on the warrant. We're just having... Cause I agree with Mary. I'm not sold on this at all.
Yeah.
I think the cost to the homeowner is gonna be higher. The municipality may do well, but the homeowner isn't. And there's no guarantee on energy savings every year, cause there's no guarantee on what the energy companies are gonna do. They're giving them for now, but there's no guarantee they're gonna be giving them. And, um, the cost of heating is going up every day, no matter what kind you have. Um, I'm not sold on it. To put it on the warrant, to let the residents vote on it, I would do that, but when it comes time to vote on it, I will not support it.
Yeah, no, this is just a vote to have Leon write it. Then we will vote at another meeting to put it on.
That's fine.
Support or not support, or just put it on.
I think the fact that so many have adopted it and nobody has decided to not is, tells me that maybe it isn't that onerous for everybody, you know?
The other thing too is, I live in a relatively newly built home. And if the home is built well, um, there isn't a whole lot of energy going out. If the home is built well, um, and, and I live in, our, um, energy cost is very, is very little. I'll tell you strict, real, seriously, cause the house is airtight. So I'm not sure that this is, this is the end-all to, to a built home, cause a home truly built well by a builder who is really giving it all is going to be energy efficient. And if that builder knows to put in energy efficient, uh, furnaces or whatever the case may be, you're gonna have the savings. So I think the discussion on savings to a homeowner is really negligible at this point for me. This is just for me.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion of having Leon write the warrant article? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, very informative.
Now, if the board wouldn't mind, I hadn't realized Hamilton Rod and Gun Club was still here, but they do have a application for a one-day liquor license that wouldn't take too long if we look at it. Priscilla?
Can I just, um, give a point, and I know it's off track, but, uh, just news blip just came across.
Oh.
Um, Mrs. Bush has passed away.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry for that.
I thought it was the one that people get an extra tax day.
No, it was just a flash on here that she passed away.
She said she was gonna refuse additional treatment.
That's too bad. She was a great lady.
May her memory be eternal.
Yeah. Okay, who's representing?
That would be me, this guy.
Okay. Okay, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Lauren Duski from the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club.
Okay, and explain what it is you would like to do.
Well, our fishing committee is hosting a, um, trout spring fishing derby. Make sure I can read all the details, um, at the second and third ponds on May twelfth. So what they were hoping to do was just to be able to, we have like a little portable quarter keg stand. They just wanna have a keg there with a bartender, just for the participants, probably about thirty, forty people. It's way in the back, um, if anybody's familiar with the club, it's at the end of Fish Shack Road where our camping area is. So there'd be no off-street parking issues, anything like that. Everybody's way in the back. So we're just looking to be able to do that, so...
Right, we've given one-day liquor licenses up here before.
Right, and it runs, um, the derby starts at eight AM, it ends at two. We obviously won't start, sorry, then, having breakfast first. But the derby does end at two. Um, and so they're just really trying to start building up the fishing community back up in the club. And they were hoping at this point, get the derby.
I know we've never had any complaints on the one-day licenses in the past. Any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have department head reports. Greg Morse, DPW.
Madam Chair, in your packages that were given to you today, you have Greg's, uh, monthly reports from March and April of two thousand and eighteen.
Good evening again.
February and March.
I'm sorry, February and March.
Yeah.
You're rushing April.
I wish it was over.
You should've known.
And they would...
That's all I'm gonna say.
Sweep in the streets.
As they plow them yesterday.
And then they plowed it the next day.
Yeah, well, might happen again on Thursday.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, February, you know, we had a nice little stretch, so we did some, some, uh, like picking up trash, uh, cold patch work, DI repair, drop inlet repairs. Did a lot of equipment repairs, um, service police stuff, so, uh, February was really a pretty reasonable month. March started picking up and certainly April hasn't, hasn't, uh, spring hasn't sprung yet. But, uh, the only one recent thing we had is that one of these bad windstorms, the, uh, fence at the dam pushed over and, uh, we've gone up and repaired that, so. The chain link fence on the top of the dam, so we had to do that at Big Alum, so... It was kind of an unexpected thing, but, uh, that's done. And March essentially is the same thing. March was more snow, snow plowing, more storms. Uh, we had close to forty inches of snow just in March alone, so... Last time I added up, I didn't do, I think we were around eighty, around eighty inches, but I haven't added the last couple storms in, so I don't, I'm not really sure where we are, but we're certainly up around eighty for the year. So Barbara, Barry, uh, had called on Friday to see if we had any more expenses on the snowplow stuff. And we told her, no, everything's been submitted and paid for. And then we had to call today and said, no, we had to open it back up for Monday. So, uh, so it was my fault. to call today and said, no, we had to open it back up for Monday, so, so it was my fault.
That's for, just so the board knows, that's for the article we'll need to do for town meeting, for, I mean, fixing it.
But, but we answered the question on Friday and we had to call back today, so.
It's usually the way.
It's always the way.
Okay, questions on Greg's report? Greg, on the February private road maintenance, six point two-five days, and then it went into March, was that just to finish up shampoo and South Shore?
It, yeah, what happens is if you start them, you know, on an, an end day, but you're not finished, you go back the next day. There's another thing coming up for, we did some survey work at the village, the trail parking lot. It started out on February and then, I don't know if that's in this one, in April, or either March and April of, is this, let me see. Trail. It must be coming.
Be in the next report.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, one, I'm pretty sure one ended in one month and one started up on another one, or something, I don't know, I got to check that. But, that's what happens.
Anything from the board? Anything else going on?
I was going to say, we have two other items for, for Greg before he leaves.
Right.
One is, you have in your packages, Chapter Ninety final report for Contract 500, 5099 zero dash one, for New Boston Road, for fourteen thousand linear feet of, of work to be done. The request for, for, the expenditures were two thousand, two hundred ninety-eight thousand four ninety-nine and two cents, and we need to submit for reimbursement.
Is there about to do some? Some moved? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then we have a couple of appointments.
Yep.
You have three applications in your agenda package. The first we'll, we'll pick will be Ron Barrows. Ron Barrows is applying for a heavy equipment operator position. We would ask for his appointment to be effective May twenty-first. He needs a thirty-day notice for his current job at a rate of pay of step one of the union contract.
Hey, is there any questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I, I just had a general question, not, not on any one particular applicant, but I just, would like to question whether the, these positions were, were posted with the union prior to advertising in the newspaper?
Uh, they were told, the, the guys were told, because, because two of them had applied out of the union, and one of them's in here, so.
Yeah, I, I know one of them's in here, but, you know, usually it requires a, a formal written notice to the union, I just was wondering if it, I think that's what the contract would require, right?
I don't know, I've never, never done it in...
Okay.
Ever.
Well, I, I just, okay.
Me, it, it might be, but I've never, not even from the first one to now.
Did you review it to see if it required it? Because if it does in the future, we have, we really have to do it.
You have to buy it, buy it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I'd like, you know, I'm just asking if you could check, check the contract.
Yeah.
I believe it does require, you know, a notice and a certain number of days advanced before it's advertised outside the, the union.
But I certainly told them, you know, and two guys have applied and one is out of, out of it.
Okay, that was, that's my only question, it's just a general question for, for this whole hiring process. And the town administrator was, you know, was talking about the initial applicant here, and I, I hope I didn't interrupt him.
No, no, you're fine. So he's applying, I don't know if I mentioned, he is applying for the heavy equipment operator, was reviewed by Mr. Morse, and I interviewed Mr. Barrows, and I'm recommending for him to begin, May twenty-first, step one of the union contract.
Is there a motion? Some moved? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Next, I want to introduce Stephen Suter. He is applying for the light equipment operator position, looking to start him at step one of the union contract effective April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Mr., Mr. Suter actually came and was here to introduce himself to the board.
Would you like to come down, please?
Hello.
Yeah, Steve Suter?
Nice of you to sit through us.
Thank you.
Be careful, he's a blaster.
He's excited about his opportunity to come work for the town of Sturbridge.
Right, you can tell by the smile. Okay, any questions for him?
Yeah, I, you have three different hoisting licenses, in addition to your CDL. The two I recognize as an excavator, which would also give you a backhoe and, and a front-end loader.
Yeah, the one C, yeah.
The one C's the front-end loader.
Yes.
And the four B would be...
It's for drill rigs.
For drill rigs.
Yes.
We have catch basin cleaners and, what else do we have that would be, oh, a boom mower?
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
There's four Cs and four Es, and they're all different, they're, not one universal.
There's not one universal, in the four series, you got to get each one as...
Yeah. I think A, a four A would do them, would do them, would do them all, but they're, that's more of a crane, yeah, expertise.
There's, there's a municipal hoisting license that would cover all of the town equipment as well. I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning if, if there's, if we, if we're going to have, you know, heavy equipment operators, would they, would they also be able to operate other lighter equipment, like the boom mower, or the...
No, that's the way it's set up, that, it, even, you know, I guess as you, as you progress up the ladder, it still doesn't alleviate, you know, the stuff below the ladder, so. Really, the heavy equipment operator, it's, it's, it's the excavator, the grader, and the loader. And, so, he's licensed for the loader, certainly can run the loader, and, but it would be, you know, it's different to, to be in a backhoe, a John Deere, you know, smaller backhoe versus running the wheeled excavator, and you got to get used to it, and then men working around it in the street. So, you know, I talked to him about it, and he said he, in, in to get started, he would prefer to come in at the light and then, you know, get, gradually get more acclimated to, you know, the equipment that we have, and then at some point, you know, possibly... And that's not unusual, you know, everybody has their license, but they have specific things where they're really good at, and other things they're not so good at, and, you know, strengths, so.
Yeah, I, I saw a light equipment operator, and I'm thinking like boom mower, or...
No, well, it's just really, it's really just the backhoe, or, you know, we have the four-wheel-drive tractor that has a rear mower, it's, it's not really a lawnmower, but it's a bush, bush hog.
Yeah.
And then, we have actually two backhoes, so you could do some grading work with the front bucket, you know. It wouldn't, it wouldn't preclude you from doing that, it's just going up into the next step is getting used to it.
He's, he's already got the heavy equipment licenses.
I mean, anything, any endorsement that I would, you know, I would need that would benefit, I would absolutely, you know, be able to obtain, you know.
But, I'm just asking that question.
Certainly.
You know, would you be able to do some of the lighter equipment? You got, you got some very good hoisting licenses, but, you know, I was just, just was, since I had you here, I was asking about some other stuff that we own, and again, the, the one, you know, there is a municipal certification that covers everything that the town owns too, a municipal hoisting license. You can't use it on the outside, you can only use it where you're working for the town.
Sure.
But it covers everything, so it's...
That'd be great.
So that's, that's another way to approach it.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion? Some moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And then the final candidate is David Mitchell, he is a current employee, he is applying for the heavy equipment operator position, and we would ask that he, that his appointment be effective the same day, April twenty-third, at the appropriate rate of pay per the contract, at the employment contract.
Some moved? Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Good. Thank you.
Rest up for Thursday.
What's that?
Rest up for Thursday.
Yeah, I know.
There won't be any...
I won't.
You have my guarantee.
Ray would be nice.
Okay. Next, we have water sewer, Violia.
You also have Shane's packet in your, or at least the most recent one in your...
Yes. Good evening, Shane.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good.
I guess I'll start with any questions you might have on the operation reports that I submitted for February and March.
No question, just an observation though, not taking, our revenues are down, not taking outside.
Yeah, we're, we're still running the pilot, and compliance comes first, and we're making the zinc limit, but we're not making it by a lot. We're still taking in-town septicage, but right now the out-town septicage is, that's just not, we, we just can't, can't make the limit with it. And I'm well aware of the impact on the revenue, but my hands are tied. So, we, we, and we're still working with Tylenol, and there's, we're thinking about switching to trying another chemical and see if that happens, but that zinc limit, it's tight, it's very tight, so we're just going to have to see how that plays out.
Okay, anything else?
The coal mag drums were reinstalled with the help of the highway department and hiring a crane, and, so those two were back in, and two went back up to the factory. The majority of the cost was covered by Evoca. The water bills went out, there's a couple requests for abatements. Leon's information has been given to those residents, and the hydrant flushing is underway. Obviously, the weather hasn't made it too easy. The east, east side of town's pretty much done, and we'll be heading out west. Like I said, when the weather gets a little bit better, that's really all I have for you.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Do you, Madam Chair? I received one person's information from you today. Are we expect, am I expecting any other applications for abatement?
Um, yeah, Sandy sent another resident your information, I, I don't know if he was CC'd on the email or not, I'll, I'll forward you a copy in the morning, I will do that.
I only saw the one that you forwarded to me this morning.
Right, I'm still waiting to hear back from that gentleman.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
We always do, once the bills go out.
Ah, not always, but...
It's, it's, um, the new meter system's working well, and I've actually run some numbers just on pumping versus build, prior to the meter upgrades, and then after, we were doing about twenty-six percent unaccounted for, just on pumping versus build, now it's down to like eighteen percent, so the, the meter upgrade is bringing in additional revenue.
That's good.
So, have all the delinquent residents who have not done the upgrade on the meter, have they all been compliant now?
No, we still have two residents, but one house is vacant, and actually, the, the house got destroyed over the winter, there was over seven feet of water in the cellar, but the person walked away from the house, and we can't even figure out who owns the house now to get in there and try and put one in, and there's still another resident who just flat-out refuses.
Are we paying, are they charged, being charged?
They're, they're getting the fine every quarter.
Are they paying it?
That I don't know.
Just curious.
Isn't that simple?
Amazing.
The simplest and easiest thing in the world.
And it's free.
I know, it's amazing, it's amazing. Why pay a fine if you can get it for free?
Well, some people are just...
There's a reason they don't want us to go in the basement.
Yeah. Might not want to ask that one.
Yeah, gosh, take the police with you.
May be legal now.
Well, anything we can do for you?
No, actually, things, yeah, can you make it warm?
I thought that was your job.
No, just, the zinc thing is, is our biggest issue right now. And then, believe it or not, not that I want, you know, May first, I got to start watching the stream limits, so the water ban, obviously, that's not an issue right now, but it's something we'll be monitoring.
Okay, thank you, Shane, good night.
You too, thank you.
Okay, next we have a council of aging director.
In your agenda package, you have a, a spreadsheet or note of the items that she's going to mention today?
Yes, welcome, Heather, and I was not here when the board voted for you, so I didn't get to say welcome then.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, this is my first time doing this, so I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to be doing, so I did supply Leon with a, a list of the things that I've been working on, so I guess I'll just read that to you, and you can just let me know what you want and what you need to know. So, I have been working with Kristen Accounting and Jean, and I've gone over all my accounts, I still have a couple that I'm working on that I'm not sure of, but I have sort of a spreadsheet to keep all the information updated, which I do every single time I do anything, so that I can share that whenever it's needed. I've already been paying invoices and doing payroll, I've already established, or I, what I would like to think, a very good working relationship with my COA board. I've already supplied them with a, my first monthly refinance report, which I do have a copy for if you needed one. I will be working on them with quarterly reports, annual reports, and it's not on here, but we will be working together, with my board, on our formula grant, which I believe we'll be renewing in July and August. So I'm going to include my COA board to help me to do that, so that they get a better understanding of how that works. I'm also establishing a good relationship with my friends group. We are currently working on doing some trips that they will be helping us sponsor. One would be to the Butterfly Conservatory, one to Smith College, the Botanical Gardens, a trip to Yankee Candle, Cracker Barrel Lunch, and Christmas tree shopping, Christmas tree shops. So, we've been working, working, getting quotes from local places, and I'm not going to say the name just yet because I need them to vote on it, but we've got some, some good prices for using a bus to go do a monthly trip, and the friends group is going to be voting on sponsoring, where they will be helping to sponsor these trips for us. We have been looking at, with the friends group, of purchasing some equipment, one of which is a treadmill, and I've given them quotes for that, which they will be voting on. Also, the pickleball paddles and balls, our snowboards are back, and it's been brought to my attention that they love their pickleball.
You have to explain that, you have to. Does anyone know what that is?
I, I'm not even overly sure about the pickleball game.
I have to Google it.
But it, it, from what I can tell, it is a sport that's crossed between, like, ping-pong and tennis.
Tennis.
And it's with paddles and the balls, and it's got its own little court, how it's set up and taped off, and our, they love it, and my friends group is going to be voting on purchasing some paddles and some balls that will be available for people, seniors to come in and borrow and rent out from the senior center. We get them in the senior center to come get their paddle balls, maybe they'll be intrigued by everything else that's going on. Entertainment, we are doing a Polynesian party on the twenty-fourth of Bay. I'm also working with the COA board on doing a friends, I'm, the, the friends group, on doing birthday parties for over ninety, for ninety and over again. We've had our nurse... We've had our nursing students, and their last day will be April 18th, so the friends group is helping sponsor a little goodbye gift to each one of them. Let's see, we are looking at some more exercise equipment based on what the seniors are asking for. We haven't really gotten too far on that, that's still a work in progress. I have reestablished our involvement with SALT. In fact, we are doing a senior expo on May 3rd, and I'm working with the police department here, Sergeant Payne, I believe, is who I've been working with.
Now, Heather, can I just stop you there for one minute? It's the expo, but they have SALT meetings once a month at the senior center?
Yes, we do still have the SALT meetings once a month, but we really haven't been doing a lot with this outside of the senior center. So, we haven't been involved with the expo, and I guess according to them, I believe they've had a few years. So, we will be back involved with that on an annual basis, at least, if anything, at least for the senior expo, at the very least. Let's see, I have become involved with the senior center study committee. See, there are a few little grants that I am in the process of researching and applying for now. One of them is the Helping Hand Mini Grant through MAX EOT for Transportation. Let's see. Applying for Transportation Planning Framework, for the Transportation Planning Framework Grant. In fact, I'll be attending a grant training in May for this. I'm an advocate for the dementia-friendly community. I will be attending a training at the end of May. I'm applying for a dementia and age-friendly capacity building grant. This is my dementia-friendly community book, and I'm already starting to fill it up with stuff to help me. One of those grants that I'm looking at is actually going to be for starting a memory cafe at the senior center. It is still a huge work in progress. I'm going to be taking a field trip out to Dudley and to Framingham to go visit their memory cafes, to get more information on how to do this. I'm working with Barbara Kelk, Kelker? Did I say that right?
Kellyper, I think.
Yes. Who does, who does our caregiver meetings monthly, and I've been picking her brain, and she's gonna be going along with me for the field trip to go check out their memory cafes. So, we're working on that kind of stuff. Let's see, part of the, the memory cafe, there's also another little grant that goes along with it if I want to apply for it, which is the ACL Caregiver Respite Support Services. It's a pilot grant. I'm not sure yet whether we qualify for that, but I am looking into it to go along with the other memory cafe grant that I'm going to apply for. Let's see, so, the memory cafe, the respite program, family support volunteers, facilitator social audience club, that's all has to do with incorporating the memory cafe and working forward to making a dementia-friendly community. So it's just all stuff that's still working, obviously, work in progress.
Madam Chair, before she moves off of those, I just want to mention that the age and dementia-friendly community was one of the goals that the Board of Selectmen established this year, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have established an open policy with my seniors. I make it a point to go out every single day and mingle with them at lunch, talk to them during their different groups and activities, and I've made it very clear that my door is always open if they have a question, a concern, something they want to share, if they just need to vent. I will welcome them into my office to discuss anything that they feel that they need to talk to me about, obviously confidentially. I have established weekly meetings with my staff, and we are definitely adding a new class in June. It is chair dancing. It will be on Mondays. For those who can't do line dancing but love to be able to do that whole concept, we're gonna, we're gonna do the chair dancing. Let's see, I do know most of my seniors' names, and they like to change seats where they are to see if I can still remember their names, so they're having fun with me. I have been working with Ann Leslie and I hope we're gonna be working with Leon with the Senior Tax Workoff Program and the new regulations. I know there's a lot of stuff going forward with that that we need to adjust and work with coming in for the new fiscal year. Leslie and I plan to do all the Meals on Wheels visits and go out and deliver the meals, so I can get to know some of our shut-ins and let them get to know me, since they don't get to come in and see me. And I have started reading the, reading and watching the videos to become the IS-700 and ICS-100 designation, which was also one of the goals that was presented to me. So, and I, that's about all I have.
Well, I wouldn't say that's all. So you've settled in well?
Oh, I love it. I love it. I gotta tell you, they made me feel comfortable and welcome my very first day. It was amazing. What a great group of people.
That's nice. Anything from the board?
I love that you have students here. I see that you had nursing students. Are they from like Quincyman or Stick?
UMass.
UMass, thank you.
UMass. Is this, is like, is this considered one of their clinical sites?
It's definitely, I'm not sure how it works, but I know that they, I guess they do this every year, where they come out and do so many hours working with the seniors, and they do everything from playing dominoes and knitting with them, to, you know, dealing with medical questions and things like that with them.
Blood pressure checks and wellness checks.
Yes.
Do they have to have an instructor with them, or are they, no?
No, the students are in their last year, so they're able to come on their own. We also have, I've also noticed that we do a lot of intergenerational stuff. I've had a lot of kids coming over and doing things with the seniors, which I didn't know we did, and it was really cool. So even the kids have come over from the elementary school and done some playing dominoes, and they were learning how to play pitch, and it was pretty neat.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to go out. Does anybody else? I know you like to go left to right.
Oh, yeah, but no.
Oh, okay. I just, have we always had these weekly, quarterly financial reports with Council on Aging, or is this a new thing that we've added?
This is something I don't, from talking to my COA board, they have never had, they have never received anything like this before.
Is this a request of theirs, or how did it come about?
Maybe I can help explain. So, upon the search for a new senior center director, I met with the Council on Aging, and the Council on Aging made it clear that they would like to be more active on the financial side of things, but also on the operational side of things. And it became clear when Barbara and Chris and I met with the COA at their request, that they really didn't have an understanding as to the accounts that they had, the revolving funds. Many of them didn't even know what a revolving fund was, what it was used for, what some of the balances were, what the grants were being used for. So, the Council on Aging asked me if I had any objection to them getting more financial information than what they were accustomed to in the past, and I said absolutely not, and I worked with Chris and Barbara to coordinate, you know, the proper reports. The Council on Aging Director always receives reports, right? Every monthly, we get a monthly statement from the town accountant that we have to reconcile. We get quarterly statements as well. And what Heather and I are going to do is, is meet periodically with the, with the COA board, make sure that they have the information and that their questions are answered. They've seen draft reports at their last meeting, which I attended, which was what, maybe two weeks ago, I think it was, and they were more than satisfied with the, with the draft reports, and meets their expectations fully, so they were, they were very pleased.
Okay, so that's a good thing. I mean, they should be informed of the monies and all that type of thing. So I gather that it's also new, this policy and procedure agreement?
One of the things that the Council on Aging and I talked about was, was that there should be some expectations, sort of like a memorandum of understanding between the Council on Aging and the senior center director. What kinds of expectations should the Council on Aging Director have of the council, and what kinds of expectations should the council have of the senior center director? So things like, and I've been working with the chair of the Council on Aging on this document, and with Heather on this document, and it would be things like, you know, you know, providing updates on the status of our financial accounts, providing updates on the condition of the building, providing updates on the condition of our programs, you know, on a, on a monthly basis. And in return, the Council on Aging Director should expect that, you know, decisions are made at meetings, that, you know, that their job will be to support the programs and the services that are provided at the Council on Aging, so on and so forth. These kinds of agreements are in place in a couple of communities and a few municipalities in Massachusetts, and I think that Sue Grandone, who's the chair of the Council on Aging and I, and Heather, looked at some of the models that were used by, you know, the, the executive office of Elder Affairs for guidance on how to craft such a document. I think they're gonna be reviewing a draft document at their next meeting, which I think is in two weeks, I think it is. Yeah, so that's a new, that's a new thing.
Okay. And then just my other question, I think it's great you're looking into purchasing exercise equipment and a treadmill, and they don't, there's no exercise equipment in the seniors' section?
There is.
There is? What, where? I don't, I've never...
Downstairs.
Oh, downstairs.
We do, we have like, we have like one elliptical, one treadmill, one bicycle.
Oh, okay.
But we're finding, what I'm finding is that like a lot of the people want to go down and they want to buddy up, so they want, you know...
I'm gonna have to go check it out. I've never, although he's gone downstairs, I've never seen it.
Yeah. So they want to use a treadmill together, and we only have one, so the treadmill seems to be our most popular item. So, we have looked into getting them donated, but if I get them donated, then they will not be, what's the word, they are not certified safe if it's donated, so therefore, we can't use it in the senior center because our insurance wouldn't cover that.
Yeah, no, definitely not.
So, it has to be purchased brand new, but we can look on the, on the very lower side of, of purchasing, and we don't need, you know, the Cadillac version of a treadmill.
No, no, but like that kind of stuff, we definitely want to get it in good shape because if that malfunction's when they're on it.
It has to be new. It has to be certified, serve, has to be safe certified, so that the insurance, our insurance would cover that. But, yeah, there's definitely criteria that it has, it has to meet, but...
And to answer your question, they are used quite a bit.
They are, yes, they are.
That's good. Now, I know like most fitness places, you have to, I think every fitness place, you have to sign like a release. Do we require that when people use our fitness stuff?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. But maybe that's something that we will look at.
I mean, just something to think about. I, I think it's great they're used, but usually, most fitness places will say, you know, that they're certifying, that they're healthy enough to go on a treadmill and not holding the town liable.
We do have a monitor at our front desk, which we can see all the floors, so one of the little screens, we can see people exercising too. So if there were a problem, we would see it immediately. That report that I gave you to look at, that, this is something similar to what I had done before I came here, so I just put this together based on what I knew as of this, to put this in for that meeting. As I learn more and get further acquainted with my accounts and what's going on, I will be tweaking this report for my board. So, and as if there's things that they want to see that I don't have on here, I will be adding that too for them.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
Yeah, one, one thing I've done over the last few weeks is talked to a lot of people in, in town, and, and I have to say, one of the, one of the most commented things, something that people just brought up was your, the exercise programs at the senior center. People in town love them.
Good. Good.
And it's, they're very, very well-liked by the people that, that use the senior center, and, you know, Mary Selectman Dowlin just mentioned, we should concentrate on getting more equipment for exercise and stuff, but the programs you do have, I must say, are very, very well-liked by the people.
And I have, like I said, we're adding a new one come June, and the same instructor is willing to do another exercise class after that one, if I have an interest, so we're gonna start with one class and see how that goes. We need another one, we will.
Okay, anything else from the board? Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll see you how many months?
We'll see her in a few days.
Well, I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah. That's right, tomorrow, yes.
What's tomorrow?
The senior study.
Building Study Committee.
Oh, my gosh, what am I doing tomorrow that I don't know about?
Mary's on the committee, but she wasn't at the last meeting, she was recovered.
Okay, all right.
I would have rather been at the last.
Well, it was a pleasure to meet you, that's all. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Town Administrator's Update, and the first thing listed is the proclamation for Tree City, which 29 consecutive years, seems like I've been reading it that many times too. It says, "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Sturbridge has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the last 29 years, 29 consecutive years, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Sturbridge do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the town of Sturbridge. We urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, support our town's community forest program, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations." So is there a motion to sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, do you have the original? We can do it after, if we remember. Okay, next, Leon is requesting a vote to accept the resignation of Angela Smith from the Special Events Committee. She's got two-year-old twins and quite busy working and everything, and even though she likes being on the committee, she doesn't feel she has the time to put into it. So is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
And we wish her the best of luck with her new twins.
You know? Okay. We did the LICA license. We have the amendment to the appointment procedures that we've been...
Delaying.
Delaying and delaying because we have...
This is the first time we had a full board in several months.
I know, I can't remember the last month.
So, the Board of Selectmen asked me at the, at our annual retreat to look at policies, the policy on appointment procedures, which would allow for non-reappointment based upon policy differences, which I believe was the intention of the Selectmen when we met at that retreat. I did take the liberty of drafting, well, we already have this policy, this is Policy A1. The changes are tracked, so you'll see the tracked changes in Section 1. It will add a sentence, well, I'm sorry, adds a clause to a sentence, so that it will read now, "The Office of the Town Administrator shall be responsible for notifying the Board of Selectmen and the Town Clerk after the Administrator receives a notice of vacancy or an intention of a member thereof not to seek or accept reappointment from the appointee to any multi-member Board or Committee, or where the Town Administrator chooses not to reappoint a member to a multi-member Board of Committee due to policy differences." Then moving on to Section 3, similar language, "After notifying the Board of Selectmen of a vacancy on a multi-member Board or Committee," or in appointing, or in an appoint- of a vacancy on a multi-member Board or Committee or in appointing, or in an appointed office of the municipality, or the intention of a member of a multi-member Board or Committee, or an incumbent in an appointed office not to seek or accept reappointment, or in cases where the Town Administrator chooses not to reappoint a member of a multi-member Board or Committee due to policy differences." And then the final, um, um, point that I just want to mention is those are the two changes. Uh, in five, I just want to bring out to section five, uh, the last sentence, I think there was a question when we were meeting, we didn't have the benefit of having the policy in front of us, what the qualifications that we would be looking for, for candidates for boards and committees. And I did want to make a mention that the, that section five has the sentence that says, "All appointments shall be made for the benefit and the best interest of the town of Sturbridge as determined by the appointing authority." And it references in the previous section that people who are going to be appointed to multi-member boards and committees or offices are people who are judged by the appointing authority to be the best candidate for appointment by virtue of merit and fitness, by determined by past experience, professional or technical qualifications, education, or any combination thereof. Uh, I hope that answers the questions, and I, if the board is agreeable with these changes or we can talk about other changes, um, I look forward to having a conversation with the board about that.
Okay, comments from the board?
Um, in, uh, in section three, uh, does it mention, uh, it, it says where you're supposed to, um, post notification of vacancies? And does it mention the cable TV po-, on here, or, I didn't see it in section three at all? But I, there is another section of the town bylaws that says, uh-
Well, I, what I-
Leon's website.
It, yeah, but he's not talking, you're talking-
I'm sorry.
But I'm saying cable T- television is specifically required.
Or one channel.
Yeah.
One of our, one of our public access channels. It doesn't specifically say that, but we, we, doesn't, there's no reason why we couldn't include that amendment to section, uh, to section three.
I, I'm just, for consistency with the town bylaws, the way, we have to post all vacancies.
I would consider that a friendly amendment, that I wouldn't have any problem with if you wish to, uh, further amend it.
Anything else from the board? Do you have something?
Personally, I, I don't see any reason why our existing policy on appointments needs to be changed. I think it's clear, I think the charter's clear. Um, with all due respect, in particular, the additions where it states where the Town Administrator chooses not to reappoint a member to a multi-member Board or Committee due to policy differences, I think that phrase, "due to policy differences," is just going to invite more questions, and I think it encourages ambiguity into the appointing process. I think there'll be a lot of questions from residents, what exactly does that mean, "due to policy differences?" So if a member, policy on something differs from ours, they're out? I don't know. I just, I just feel that that is not adding anything of merit. I think it's introducing more ambiguity into a process that's pretty clear as it is. So I, I personally am not going to vote for the changes.
Leon, did you, um, look at this policy and compare it to what's in the general bylaws?
Well, policy A1, we already have that policy.
Is that the one that's in the general bylaws?
We adopted it.
Yeah, but no, I know what I'm saying is we have something in the general bylaws too.
I believe I did when we originally adopted it, um-
Because we went through, I didn't totally agree with it when that bylaw was put forward. It was, in my mind, complicated, but-
The, the general bylaw? Okay. That hasn't been amended since I've been here.
Yeah, no, this was-
Okay, you're talking originally.
Anything else from the board? Well, what's the board's pleasure? Somebody want to make a motion or-
Need a motion to accept this?
With the, with Mike's addition? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Four, all those opposed? Four to one. Now, that didn't take many months. Okay, next, we have a warrant to articles and vote to close the warrant.
So I sent to you folks a revised, um, um, warrant today with some minor changes from, uh, the original version that I had sent to you folks. So the one that I'm going to go through is art, uh, is dated 4/17 on the top corner. I think that Colleen left you a copy in your mail slots tonight, so if you grab those. Does everyone have it?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, do you want to vote to put them on tonight?
Um, well, it'll save time, we can just vote to put it on, we don't have to vote to-
Make a recommendation?
Make a recommendation, because that would entail discussion on some, but some of these are so easy, they-
Yes, but so, if what hap-, if we don't recommend them one way or the other tonight, then we gotta do them again.
You will.
Yeah, but that would be-
We can do it at our meeting on Monday when we have our budget.
We are definitely having it. I know we, you asked for dates, but I didn't know it.
Well, I got enough people to say that they could make it.
I didn't know that it was set.
Well, I, you're gonna get an email from me in the morning, so-
Okay, so same time, same, it's only one agenda item, right?
Uh, yeah, it'll be minimal. If we have anything else, it'll just be emergency stuff or minor things. There won't be any policy discussion stuff. Only budget, budget, only budget and town meeting warrant.
Oh, I got this on Friday. Oh, it came new today.
That was today, I didn't-
Do you want me to go through these, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay. Article, so I'll start with the annual town meeting warrant. Uh, article one is the hearing of town reports. It's a standard article, it's on all of our town meeting warrants.
Okay, is there a motion to place it?
Motion to place.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Um, Community Preservation Committee Report, again, we're required to do that, so we do.
Place.
Okay, I wonder if we can just, on these easy ones-
Why not just do them once and for all?
Yeah.
Place and support, so we can just limit our discussion.
Or even have one, just go through the whole thing right now and-
I think we could get a lot done.
You're gonna go individually?
I think you can get a lot done, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that was place and support?
Place and support.
Okay, um, on article one, can we vote?
We voted on it. Place it.
Only to place it.
Place and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five to nothing. Article two, Community Preservation Committee Report.
Motion to place and support.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing.
Article three is a Community Preservation Budget Request for Historic Cemetery Restoration. We do this every year.
Mm-hmm. Is there a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Article four is for Community Preservation Expense for Open Space and Trails.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Place and support.
And support. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, this is the one that Leon changed from the original one.
I'm sorry, which one? Article five?
Article five.
I thought you were talking about the previous one. Yes, article five is the Winter Weatherization Project at the Center Office Building. Um, in essence, what we're looking to do at this point is use, uh, the, the amount of money is not going to be enough to trigger the grant, so we're going to, um, we're going to look to use Historic Preservation Fund under Historic, uh, under the Historic Fund to do the weatherization, installing storm windows at the Center Office Building project. It has not yet been approved by, by, um, the CPC. I expect that that's going to be approved at their next meeting. I think it's going to be in two weeks.
Okay, is there a motion?
So this is eliminating the Historical Commission part of it for historical-
No, no, it's still being brought forward by Friends of Historic Preservation. Where, the only thing that's missing is the grant portion.
Oh, okay.
The only difference is that the, it's, the grant, you had to have it over a certain threshold in order for the grant to apply, but the building is too small, the project isn't going to rise to the level where we would qualify for the grant.
But originally, we were asking for 30,000, now we're asking for 50,000.
We were asking for 30, because we were going to have to upfront the entire cost. We were expecting to get, hopefully, 50% of that cost back, but we're not thinking that it's going to be, rise to the level where it would matter.
Okay, so the, the total project cost is like $15,000, and so-
That's what we're expecting.
Understand, understood now.
Okay, is there a motion? Place and support?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Article six is their Annual Administration Costs Article.
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Article seven is the, uh, road repair monies that we put in the, uh, the warrant for any road repairs during the upcoming year.
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. How did, how exactly did we come up with the 458?
That's been our, it's been our traditional amount of money, um-
Okay, we haven't gone up, I mean, we don't see a reason over the years to increase it, I mean-
I think that moving forward, we probably should have a policy on doing something like that. I think, uh, you know, what I typically will do for snow and ice is move it up to cost of the contractual agreement for the personnel. This year, we did a little bit more in that. I know we're not talking budget right now, but, um, but I think that that's probably sufficient for our uses for this upcoming year. It's been at that level for a bit.
I thought so, yeah.
Does this number roughly match our chapter 90 reimbursement?
No, I think, uh, this is in excess of our, uh, chapter 90.
It's a little bit above it, yeah.
No, I think that we-
No, this is in addition to.
In addition.
This is in addition to.
I know it's in addition to, but I was-
No, I don't think it matches what we get. I think we get a, a little bit more than what we get, we put aside for ourselves in chapter 90 every year.
Okay, article eight will wait on me having-
Well, you didn't even voted on article seven.
We didn't?
No.
How come I already wrote five to nothing? All in favor?
You look right into the future. You want, we'll hold article eight?
Eight, yes, because we haven't even looked at the budget.
Yeah.
Were you holding this one?
Yep.
Hold article eight?
Yeah.
Article nine?
No, we're on nine. Water Department.
Uh, 1.462 million. I'll place and support, motion to place and support?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, article 10, Sewer Department.
Motion to place and support? Second.
Okay, Mike? Jeez, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Sewer Project Debt?
This is a standard article, we do every year. Um, basically, it outlines what our debt payments are going to be, it has to be voted this way at town meeting.
Is there a motion?
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Article 12 is your, uh, you may remember last year was the first year under the new law, which required us to have a separate article for our public access department. This article is, uh, consistent with the new law. I will point out that under capital, we have some expenses. Understand that none of these monies come necessarily from the general fund of the town. These are not raisin-appropriated articles, they are, uh, funds that come into the town from the, uh, support of the, those people who are cable subscribers. Just want to make sure that you folks know that.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Place and support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Um, article 13 is our Community Preservation Debt Service.
Okay, is there a motion?
Place and support?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Article 14, I think will be, uh, an interesting article.
Can we hold it?
Yes.
We're gonna hold that?
Yep. And I'm gonna request, can we have Annie, can we have the Recreation Director come in and present it to us?
Certainly.
I think it's worthwhile, and also, you know, for people watching.
They should be presenting to everybody.
Can I, may I ask a question? Are you looking to see if she's able to come in, uh, on Monday, the 23rd, or are we looking to do it a regular selectman's meeting?
I was thinking of a regular selectman's meeting.
Sure. The, I can, I cannot reach to her. I think they're planning on coming in and making a formal presentation in the next few weeks anyways, but-
Okay, so we can, if we can dovetail- It'll be too late for the warrant.
Well, adding it to the warrant, um-
Yeah, no, we can, until it's posted.
But in terms of getting the place and support.
Right, but can we, um, can we get the breakdown on the 6.7 for Monday, so that we can at least see where is this money coming from?
Sure.
Or going?
Sure, so the, so I, I don't know that you folks have gotten yet the draft motion, but it's the same project that came in last time. So I'll explain it, I'm not, I'll just explain it. Community Preservation, they're going to be seeking, part of the motion of this is going to be, $1 million of this project is going to come from CPC. The remainder will come as a debt exclusion project, and for the people watching at home, a debt exclusion project is a voluntary increase of taxes above and beyond the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, which would allow for the, uh, cost broken out over a period of time, and when the project is paid off, that extra, uh, tax increase will go away. So it's a two-pronged approach, vote at town meeting and a vote at the ballot box.
They need an override for Two and a Half.
They would. It would be a debt exclusion, not necessarily an override, but it would be a, it would be a debt exclusion override, similar to the ones that you would have done for the school.
All the big, all the big taken out of business.
While we're talking about this, then, I know one thing that a lot of residents have asked me in the process, are they gonna start to see, uh, new building for DPW, new building for Senior Center, new building for safety, because they keep hearing of all these studies, and they're like, are we gonna, and I've had a lot of people say to me, "Don't tell me we're gonna do the same thing we did years ago, when we fixed the town hall, then we fixed the Center Office Building," and we did this all at one time. And I think that's a fear.
And I think it's a legitimate fear.
I think so too.
I think if you folks watched my presentation to the Finance Committee last week, you will have heard, um, I basically gave that presentation to the, to the Finance Committee, and I intend to give you the exact same presentation at your meeting on Monday night. The fact is, is that you will recall, I gave, I, I forwarded to you folks copies of my capital request forms that went as earmarks to the state representative and the state senator, and I had 10 items on that list. Monies for Senior Center, public safety improvements, communication improvements, DPW building improvements, we, we're, the McOpen Road Water Line, I know we haven't said yes to all of these, but these are all things that are on the horizon, right? These are all things that we've been talking about for some time. Um, you know, we haven't even talked about things like the burying of the lines on Route 20. We haven't even talked about running utilities down Route 15, right? So there's a lot of, we haven't talked about the field project. There's a lot of things on this list, a lot of things on our wish list that we would like to see done, all of which are going to require in some way, shape, or form, um, some increased, uh, tax revenues coming forward. Maybe not all of them, one of the items that I had on the list was, was renovations at April Field Road. It was only, it was a modest amount of money comparatively to the other things. But all of these things combined, you know, I think that we were looking at almost twenty million dollars of costs, maybe more. I don't know an exact figure for the, I don't know an exact figure for running utilities down Route fifteen, you know? I don't know the exact figure of running, burying the utilities and, and doing the, the next, the phases of the commercial tourist district project. But all of these things are very important, all of these things have their constituencies. And I will have a longer conversation with you folks on, on Monday about all of these items, and I'll go through each one with you.
And how all of this is going to impact the taxpayer, because that's what they're, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I can answer the questions on the, the field project, because we've run those numbers and we know, right? We need to have our bond council and our bond rating agencies run the numbers and give us a magic number. And I think we, we have those numbers for the field project, and I'll be prepared to present them to you on Monday night. I am happy to invite Annie to come out on Monday night if you wish, or.
I, I just concern that if we ha, if we have a discussion on this, it's going to go like to two hours, and we're never going to get the budget done. That's my bigger concern.
So, what I'll do is I'll just plan for Annie then to do, to come in at the first meeting of May.
Yeah, I just want her to be able to, I don't disagree with anything Priscilla said, but I just want to be in a position where she can present the project before we have to, for those of us who may or may not support it, she should give her presentation on such a big-ticket item. I don't want to be in a position where she gives it too close to town meeting.
No, you're a hundred percent right.
So all we could do is place it.
My, my interest tonight simply was to place the articles and close the warrant. I'm not interested necessarily in getting your supports on any of these articles, I know the other ones were relatively simple.
So I'll just place.
But if you folks were comfortable placing the article like you folks did a year ago, I, that's all really, the only question that I have for you folks tonight. So there's no motion on this one?
So do we, where do we leave it?
You have, no motions have been made on this?
No, we said we would hold it.
We haven't placed it yet, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to, we're not voting on whether we support it, so I'm going to make a motion that we place Article fourteen. The recreation department is, the recreation committee is elected, and personally, regardless of how we vote on it, I think we have a duty to place it.
Yeah, the, I, I, I would agree that the voters should, should, should vote on it. So placing it, I will second, I will second your motion just for the purpose of having the voters have the ability to vote on it.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
This is to place.
To place, to place.
To place, yeah.
So that was a five zero?
Zero, yeah. Okay, Article fifteen is the Sturbridge Tourist.
Going to revisit this Monday?
If we have information, yeah.
I can.
I'd like to revisit this anyway on Monday.
Sure.
I will ask for reconsideration, because I, I'm, I mean, there has to be some discussion on this.
Yeah, I know, we need, can't you say six point seven million?
But because also, there were some questions that were raised, I want to bring up the things that were raised to them several times, and I'm not hearing or seeing any changes. That's why I'm kind of curious as to the numbers. There's been like, I'll, I'll bring this up Monday, but I want this revisited, I would like this revisited Monday.
In your agenda package for your next meeting on Monday, I will give to you the draft fact sheet that the, that the committee has been working on. Which, and, which kind of gives some answers to questions, but it also gives the cost analysis. Based on a single-family home, average single-family home in the town of Sturbridge, what the actual cost would be to the, as an increase to the average taxpayer. I'll have that data for you.
Okay, and the data of the breakdown of how they're coming up with six point seven, because as it looks to me, they haven't progressed any from what some of the suggestion given to them at the last time. I know there was millions, there was like a million and a half or two million for ledge removal.
That's dealt with in the fact sheet, she did.
She's still using ledge removal, okay, so my point was, that has been brought to them a couple of times. You can get companies to take out your ledge, and keep the ledge, and sell it for themselves, and it costs you nothing.
They're aware of that.
But, is that part of this plan, I mean, these are the questions I want to raise to you on Monday.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so Article fifteen is Sturbridge Tourist Association?
This is their annual budget.
From the hotel motel tax?
So, so, and this is probably more for the people at home and for Chase's benefit. So Article fifteen and sixteen, we have a very unique situation in our town. We take some of the monies from our hotel revenues that we get for taxes, and we use it to support our, our, our STA, our Sturbridge Tourist Association. But also to improve the town through our betterment. So you'll notice that one hundred eighty-two thousand two twenty-one is the number we use for both numbers. So that's the number we're using this year for our, our revenues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a motion on Article fifteen?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article fifteen.
Second, okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article sixteen is betterment, I just have a question on this. Down the bottom quarter, it does not specify special event overtime listed twice, one's police and one's fire, but it doesn't specify.
Yes, you're correct.
Yep, so, it will. One, one second, please.
Typically, the ten thousand's police, and the lesser one is fire.
Yes, it is. I, I will make sure that that's changed.
Thank you, I see that there's, there's monies for American flags again.
Well, not, again, that, that was, this is your original request.
No, I know, but at one point, we did have American flags years ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those were paid for privately.
But the, the only reason I said again, not, I know it's in here for the first time, but having American flags erected is, is why I said again.
Okay, is there a motion to place and support with the change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Article seventeen is our annual capital improvement plan. Capital committee made the following recommendation, I think I already brought, presented these to you already. But this is the report from the capital investment, uh, capital improvement committee.
The total amount of this is five hundred and seventy?
Yeah, five hundred and seventy-two thousand eight fifty.
I'll make a motion to place and support the capital improvement plan, Article seventeen.
I'll second it.
Okay. Let me just write that down. Mike, Chase, any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero.
Article eighteen requires anytime we're going to move money from the watering fund account to the public highway shade tree account, we need to receive town meeting approval. This is not an annual article, but a regular article.
Question? It's gone up from five thousand to six thousand?
Yeah, we, it's been at five thousand for a number of years, I believe the town, the tree warden's position was, it's been a little bit expensive to try to do the, what we were doing in the past. And the extra thousand dollars will make sure that we can do the same amount of trees.
Okay, is there a motion to place and support?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Five to nothing?
A few years ago, we started the ambulance stabilization fund, this is our annual appropriation.
Is there a motion to place and support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Five to nothing?
Again, vehicle, fire vehicle stabilization fund, we put money aside for purchase down the road of expensive, large pieces of apparatus.
Motion to place and support Article twenty, fire stabilization vehicle, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Article twenty-one is our annual OPEB trust fund.
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Article twenty-two is our annual tax rate, yeah, tax rate relief article.
Mary?
I know, I think I've asked this in prior years, but it's been at two fifty for a while. And I'm hoping that, before we, well, I don't know how others feel about supporting it, but before we do, I was hoping that you could tell us at two fifty, what kind of impact it has on that, our financial policy that we adopted, where we say we want so much in free cash. And what it would be at three hundred and three fifty. Because it seems to me that our financial policy, we're maxed, you know, it's along a continuum where we want to have so much cash reserves within a certain range to be considered, you know, sufficiently conservative in our spending. And over the years now, I, we've gotten really to the point where we're really flush, and I just wonder if we can't give a little bit more back.
Sure.
So just so I can see where we fall on that, in that.
I, I think that, I can, I can certainly get you a, a report, but if you were looking to increase that and use, you know, an extra fifty thousand of free cash, I don't think that there would be any reason why we couldn't do that.
Right, I just, before I just passively do it, just to see where, what, what kind of impact will it have in our policy?
I don't think, I don't think that that, this is, is spoken to in our policy at all, you don't have a policy that speaks to the tax rate relief article.
No, no, we don't, but we have that policy where we, where we state how much money we want to have in free cash in relation to what our budget is, and it's always fell along a continuum.
Yeah.
And I want to know by increasing this more, where do we fall in that continuum? Because I think over the years, I've said, why don't we be right in the middle? Because the economy's not that great, but over the years, we have, let's say we want to have from five to ten percent of whatever, I, I can't remember what the policy is. We've always been maxed out in terms of what we retain as a town, and we give back not as much to the taxpayers. I know it probably won't budget, but let's just see where it falls if we go to three fifty or increase it. Because I think if we fall in the middle, we're going to keep the same rating with our borrowing, you know, I, what do we?
We do very, we do extremely well with our.
But I just remember bringing this up before and wondering why we have so much free cash and, and don't give back more. But before we change it, I'd just like to.
I'm with you on that, I like to see what the numbers are.
So, let's hold.
Yeah, I mean, we can place it, but I'd like to hold off on supporting it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion then to place?
I'll make a motion to pa, place Article twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, oh, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article twenty-three is capital stabilization fund.
And this is the amount of money that we put aside in our capital stabilization fund, based upon our policies.
Motion to place and support Article twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Any discussion, all in favor?
The next few articles are, are expenditures, one-time expenditures that we're planning to use one-time funds for. Well, in the case of the first two anyways. A first, a free cash transfer for the data center upgrades at the public safety complex. We are planning a massive data service upgrade at the public safety complex, and it's to the tune of eighty thousand dollars.
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Five to nothing?
Article twenty-five is a request from the school committee of Burgess. It is to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand in free cash for the purchase of wireless devices for use at Burgess Elementary School.
Motion to place and support?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Ambulance sta, I'm sorry, Article twenty-six is a funding, it's, it is our year to fund a new ambulance. And you'll recall that under capital, we funded a portion of it, the balance is coming from the ambulance stabilization fund, one hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Is there a motion?
So the, this is what we discussed with the fire chief?
Yes.
Recently?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to place and support Article twenty-six for the ambulance stabilization fund transfer in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
All right, so this is new, I just want to explain, you may recall, if you've been looking at warrants for the last twenty years. One of our articles has been a multi-multi-multi-page revolving fund article. We changed that at the, well, the municipal modernization act changed how we're to be dealing with revolving funds. We created the bylaw at the February town meeting, special town meeting. Now every year, we have to fund the revolving fund spending limit article. So the article for the revolving funds are now going to look like this. Much easier on the eye than the previous way of looking at it. So it sets the maximum, I think it was Mary Dowling who asked, are we still going to be setting the maximum expenditure every year? And the answer is yes, and this is what that article looks like from now on. We can change this, by the way, at town meeting, but this is what we're recommending.
Can, can we hold this for further discussion?
Sure.
I, I do have a question, should, in, in the motto of this article that I, I thought I remembered, there was a total maximum expenditure for all of the revolving funds. Is, is that, am I incorrect in saying that, or?
Um.
Because if one fund is.
What you're setting is the.
Adjusted?
What you're setting is the limit for each individual line, uh, each individual one, you're not necessarily setting a bottom line. So for example, recreation, you're setting, what you're doing by this vote is you're setting a maximum of thirty thousand dollars for the recreation revolving fund. You're not necessarily setting a bottom line budget like you would if you were, like if you were looking at the STA budget, for example. Where you're looking at a, you're looking for individual categories and you're setting a bottom line. Here, you're only setting the maximum expenditure for each of those individual lines. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
But I thought in the article that we just passed at special town meeting, if there was some, some provision where if, say if the actual recreation revolving fund required thirty-two thousand dollars, you can't go over that.
You cannot go over.
There's no provision with the finance committee to.
No. Nope.
Never has.
Because, because this is not, just so that you understand, this is not monies coming out, we're not raising and appropriating. This is monies that are going in and come, monies that are coming out. So, under recreation, let's just say for argument's sake, it's the summer camp program. They're paying their expenditures for the summer camp with the revenues that they're receiving from the summer camp. They're paying their basketball.
So it goes back in.
Right, so you're, then, none of this is necessarily, I was going to say it's not taxpayer monies, but it is taxpayers' monies. It's not.
Yeah, but it's not, it's.
It's not a raise and appropriate article. So you cannot, we cannot spend thirty-two thousand, to answer your question, without changing this article.
Okay.
Okay, so.
But the limits are good, because we believe that the limits are, I mean, we have pretty long history for just about all of these accounts. And we, since my time here, we've never, I don't think we've even come close to being, exceeding one of the limits.
And we've increased these since I've been.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them have gone up, so.
And there's a new one in here.
And there's the.
Yeah, that's why I want to hold it.
Yeah.
I want to hold it for Monday.
And we have Board of Health title.
I think that's what she's.
That's the new one.
For Monday.
That's fine, we'll hold it. Article twenty-eight, it's, it's, it seems like it's a minor issue, and it is, but we do need town meeting's approval to pay off a betterment of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion?
Place and support?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Article twenty-nine is the zoning bylaw prohibition of recreational marijuana.
I'll make a motion to place and support?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Five zero. False alarm bylaw, I don't think this needs any explanation.
Motion to place and support?
Is there a second? I'll second it for a change. Any discussion, all in favor?
The only other, so that's the full articles for the annual town meeting, there were a couple of other articles that we were talking about. One was the article for, that, that Nelson Burlingame brought forward, which was the article for the possibility of, of putting monies aside for building demolition. I had emailed to you folks a, I think I copied you folks on a correspondence we received from town council, actually, it came in this morning. They've made some minor modifications to the policy, or I should say the checklist, for the removal of unsafe structures. But if we were going to include a warrant article. article, uh, for, uh, funding demolition of buildings at the request of the building inspector upon approval of the Board of Selectmen, it would require the addition of another article. I had recommended 75,000, 70, we, we don't know how much any of these buildings are really going to cost, it's dependent upon a lot of different factors. One of the factors is, do we have asbestos, do we have lead that need to be abated, other hazardous materials, the size of the building, the location of the building, there's a lot of factors that go into a demolition. I recommended 75,000 because, you know, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's not, um, it's not a six-figure number that might scare away some of the people who might, uh, find that 100,000 might be too much, rec, uh, but Nelson did recommend earlier today, um, you know, 100,000 dollars is a good starting point. My hope, and I think Nelson would agree with this, is that even the, the fact that we have the monies in the, um, in the budget would be enough to scare away any potential problem, uh, problem site. It costs us, it's going to cost us way more money to demo a building than it would be if they were just to do it themselves. So my feeling is, is that whatever we put aside is going to be enough to shake enough fruit off of the tree, but I did want to point out that Nelson did make a recommendation of 100,000 to me this morning. So that it goes before the Board of Selectmen for your consideration.
I tend to agree with you on the 100,000, it sounds like a big, big number for people to swallow. Also the fact, like you say, we really don't know the numbers, and starting out with the 75, you know, if we ever need any more, we can always go to.
Special town.
Fincom for, you know, reserve fund transfer, or if we find out, you know, then the next town meeting, we can vote more, that's just, how's the rest of the board feel?
I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
We'll let the record show that Chase is recusing himself from this discussion.
Hey, how's the mic?
Yeah.
That's really recused.
You don't have to run away.
Well, that's a good recusal, though.
You can sit in the audience.
Just don't say anything.
He's right, that's a great.
That is what I recommend as well, by the way.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Yeah.
There's no penalty.
But you don't have to. Congress doesn't?
No.
No, I know.
Mike?
I, I, uh, I, I think it, if, if we, uh, have a potential, uh, property that we may have to use this article on, and that property, uh, may exceed 75,000 in, in our building inspector's estimation, I, I would hate to have to go back to town meeting a second time to ask for more money. I mean, if we have a reasonable estimate of.
But we don't have a reason, we don't have an estimate for these projects.
We don't have a reasonable estimate?
No.
We had six properties on that list. I mean, it could be half a million dollars, to be honest with you, if you combine all of those.
Yeah, to me, this is, to me, this is a start.
Yep.
Can, can I say that I don't have a problem whether it's 75, 100, here's the problem I do have, and I ain't quite sure, because I, maybe I don't quite understand. Say we get a building, and we get to a point, we get a surveying board, and they says, take that building down, well, at that point, we have 48 hours, and it's our obligation as a town to take it down. Now, if we don't have the money, I ain't sure what happens, but I guess that's kind of like a question I want.
Well, we run into a deficit, we'll have to fix it at the annual town meeting, but if we're under an obligation to take down an unsafe building.
We have to.
We would do that whether we had your policy or not.
No, not.
No, if we make a contract with somebody, we're supposed to have the money to pay for it, so how does that work? Like, say F and G, or somebody, for instance, came in, and they said, yeah, we're going to take the building down, and, and.
The same way it happens in an emergency situation, we don't have money in here for a tornado, right? But when a tornado comes and we have an emergency situation, we have the ability to make certain procu- public, public safety procurements under an emergency situation, and we have the authority to do so. We have to explain what the emergency is, but, but, like, if a bridge was falling down, and we're responsible for that bridge, and we had to do emergency repairs, we don't have an appropriation, but we have to do that emergency repair, you know? The, the mass general law is very restrictive in the way that we handle, um, you know, procurement and appropriations and expenditures, but it's also understanding that in case of an emergency, like, for example, we've grossly, I won't say grossly, we've exceeded our snow and ice deficit for this year, we've exceeded it, we know, we've spent more money in removing snow and ice than we budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year. We have the authority to do so under mass general law, because it's an emergency situation, we can't just let four feet of snow, uh, exist on, on our roads.
That would be kind of the same.
There's an emergency provision in the procurement laws, we still have to follow the rules, you know, but.
Any other thing, Mike, just, 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 we're, we're hoping too that, you know, like you said, there's six buildings, but of those six, I've already had some people come into my office, and they're talking about doing some of the things themselves, so the fund itself will scare people into.
I'm hoping never to use a one penny of this.
Right.
We're kind of banking on that, really.
I'm just happy to have.
Priscilla, I, I do think, though, that the chair's right, I think 100,000 is not palatable for the, for the taxpayer. I think somehow 75,000 softens the blow. Um, I, I do, I really do. I, I think it's, uh, a little more palatable, and we see, we'll see what happens. Like she said, you know, it'll happen, next year, we may find out it's not enough, and you just do it higher.
Yeah.
But I think it's a start.
Yeah, I mean, I hope we don't ever get to the point where we're taking buildings down left and right.
Because that would be, that would be, not the purpose of this.
No.
Because it's the, it's the property owner's responsibility, not the town's.
Shouldn't get the idea that, well, I don't have to do it, the town's got the money.
That's why if you put too much, I think you give that perception, oh, well, they'll take it down for me, I don't have to worry about it.
Well, they still have to worry about it, because then we put a lien on their house.
I was just going to say, the code's pretty clear, even if we expend the money upfront.
Oh, yeah, we can get it.
Yeah, we're going to put a.
Yeah, good luck, just like those, uh, meters.
Meters.
Good luck.
I'm just happy to have something, because I've never seen so many as right now, and again, that, that one on, on Old Fiskill Road, right by, that, I, I can't even believe we're not being told that we.
Take that down.
Yeah, we have to, that has to be addressed sooner rather than later, because.
I'm surprised the wind hasn't done.
It's a real safety hazard, I mean, the roof has totally collapsed inside the house, one good wind, debris could go flying.
Well, we've had good winds, and I'm waiting for it to collapse.
They build them, they don't build them like.
Like they used to.
So, I mean, have, has, has the owner of that particular building approached you?
He's been in the office, and, and he's talked about it.
Nelson's told us that whole thing.
I know, oh, so nothing's changed from the last discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion then on a warrant article for demolition of?
Make a motion to place and support a demolition of buildings article of 75,000.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Four to nothing. Okay, Chase?
We also had another article that was being considered, oh, wait a minute, did you place the article for the green communities?
No.
You authorized me to create one. But if you don't mind, I think that unless you folks are opposed to the idea of including it, the language is what the language is, the article will read as the law says.
Nelson, thank you, sir, we kept you obsolete.
He's not paid by the hour, it's.
Yeah.
Uh, the article will read, to see if the town will, note, will vote to enact chapter, I'll fill in the blank, of the Town of Sturbridge general bylaws entitled Stretch Energy, uh, Stretch Energy Code pursuant to Appendix 115 double A of the Mass Building Code, uh, 780 CMR, the Stretch Energy Code, um, some of it was cut off here, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, or take any other action relative there, too. The language is set by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, um, but that is the, um, the language that I'm going to be submitting to you on Monday. I'm happy to have you hold it, or if you want to place it, or if you want to place it and to support it, whatever the board's will is, that's another article that I had as a possible article.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure on that one?
I guess there was some discussion of whether or not it would be supported, so I, I will make a, uh, motion to, to place it as, uh, described by the town administrator, which is what we asked him to do earlier this evening. So we've got, I've, I've got a, you know, it's, it's set language, so, and, uh, we can, you know, at a later time, we can, uh, vote whether or not to, uh, support it.
Fair enough.
Okay, is there a second to Mike's placement? I'll second it. Any discussion on placing? Okay, all in favor of placing, five to nothing.
And then finally, the only other article that was hanging out there as a possibility for the annual town meeting was whether or not, uh, there was a, I had a request submitted to me to consider the repeal of the abandoned vehicles article that was passed several years ago. I know we haven't had a full discussion on that, and I have yet to receive the printed materials explaining that, uh, if you want to consider that, or if you want to put that on hold, or you want to say no, whatever the board's will, uh, will is, is fine with me.
Well, we can put it on hold, because we can open the warrant anytime until it's posted.
So we can, I'll, I'll get you, if I get the materials, I'll give it to you on the, for the Monday meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I think you did the, uh, special town meeting, there was only the two articles, um, do you, did you not do that?
No, we haven't.
No, when I was here.
So the special town meeting articles only had the two arti-, uh, three, two articles, um, and now we're going to be adding a third. I would like your authorization to include, uh, the following articles. One, we're going to fix the snow and ice deficit, I wish I could tell you what the number is, but I can't.
Article 63.
Uh, yep, so we're going to do that one. Um, if, I, I would, I would like your place and support of that article, even though I don't know the exact number.
Motion to place and support Article 63, or as, whatever number it's amended after.
It will be that number.
Okay, 63, uh, free cash transfer for snow and ice deficit, second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
The next article is the creation of the new revolving fund for the Board of Health, but I'm going to assume that we're going to put that on hold.
I'd like it on hold until we get.
And then the final article I'd like your permission to include is the, um, uh, any prior year bills. We have no prior year bills, uh, as of known, uh, on April 16th. However, if one appears after we finalize the warrant and post it, I have no other way of fixing it. So I'd like to create a generic prior year, prior year bill article, uh, to, uh, to deal with any prior year bills in the event that something comes forward.
Okay, is there a motion to place?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to have you take two votes, one to close the warrant for the, uh, annual town meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant?
So moved.
Is there? Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
And I'd like to ask you to take a, uh, take a vote to close the special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing on that one.
I only have a few more items, and then you can, uh, we will, um, be able to adjourn for the evening. In your, um, emails, I sent to you a notice today that one of our board members for the Sturbridge Tourist Association, um, has, uh, had to resign for personal reasons, and I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the resignation of Jim Lemming from the STA with regrets.
So moved.
Second with deep regret.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Um, Madam Chair, uh, in, uh, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to concur with the appointment of Nick Salvador, uh, to fill the vacancy on the STA. He's been attending the meetings of the STA recently, um, and, uh, he would be a great addition to the board, and was recommended not only by myself, but also by, uh, by the STA.
Is there?
To appoint Nick Salvador to the STA?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd ask that the Board of Selectmen accept the, um, um, the IOD claim for, uh, Officer Dan Menzone.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I have no other business before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, any old business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase, I can't imagine you have any. Mike?
No, none.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. Any new business?
No.
Chase? Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
No, I just have, um, next Monday is going to be our working session on the budget, so make sure you bring your.
Budget book.
Budget book.
6:30?
6:30.
And like I said, I will have no other business, except for if there's like a routine thing, or a small minor thing, that's a yes or no quick deliberation.
Right.
It'll only be for the budget, and any ho- held articles that you would like me to give you information on, and, and by the way, if there's anything specific that you would like me to grab for you prior to the meeting, so that I would have it for the meeting, just email me or text me, and I will make sure to, uh, have that material ready for the discussion. Okay?
Okay, correspondence?
Okay, correspondence for April 17th. Correspondence dated April 6th, Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization, a Notice of a Public Hearing Thursday, April 12th, Proposed Amendment Number Two to the 2018-22 Transportation Improvement Program. April 6th, Division of Local Services in Consultation with Mass TEP Commonwealth Sewer Rate Relief Fund for Fiscal Year 2018 Distributions. April 9th, Annual Town Election. Monday, April 9th, 2018, Precinct Results and Totals. April 12th, Recreational Marijuana Prohibition, Letter from Sturbridge Planning Board, Public Hearing on Tuesday, April 10th, Vote to Support Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 32. And, um, and I would add, I think we all got a copy of a residence letter concerning the state study of New Boston Road and.
It'll be on your next correspondence.
Oh, it's on the next one, okay.
Yeah, it's right here.
All right, I, it was time for this one. Excellent.
Okay, we do have a couple of sets of minutes, April 2nd, 2018. Okay, Colleen, I apologize, because when I find things, I'm never near my computer upstairs, and I don't run upstairs like I used to, but on page three. I used to.
We all used to.
Page three, under new business, Colleen, um, second line, where, at the end where it says, El Gomans stated that, yet it is an optional choice in Sturbridge, and that, we should put in the word, some other towns do not offer the option at all, take out the word either. Okay, does anyone else have anything?
I have one, um, Colleen on page one, under public announcements, wishing the residents of the Orthodox faith, the O needs to be capitalized.
Okay, anyone else? Zero motion to approve is amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, and one abstention.
I'm abstaining, yeah.
Yeah, there's. Two abstentions, three.
Go to.
Three, zero, two. Okay, then we have November 20th.
So, Priscilla, were you absent, I'm able to?
I was.
Okay, so I think, I, I just.
I have enough people.
No, I just think, were you up to?
Oh, you weren't?
Am I reading it wrong?
You have enough people for November 20th, it's you.
No, I know. Were you absent during the Holy Week?
It was.
You were present.
I was absent.
Oh, okay, I was too, I think you just.
Need to add Priscilla's name as absent. I, it is added.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
November 20th.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, she's gone back to April 2nd.
Oh, I was here on it.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, I didn't know, I thought you weren't coming.
Yeah, no, I wasn't.
She wasn't, but she did.
Yeah, I had someone to cover for me, and I can't...
We were all confused.
I know we were absent on November 20th.
Yes, I know. This is not usual, Chase, this is budget warranty. I know. Okay, so November 20th.
That's the one I was absent at. But you have three, so...
Oh, the bottom of page four, under ethics disclosure from Kevin Filczak. Third line, it should end right there at laws, and then somehow this, and the resignation of Glenn Colburn, and wish him well in his retirement. That would have been a separate...
Separate item, yeah.
Separate item.
Didn't he retire before that?
November.
November? Was it that?
No. I think that might be a mistake.
It was September.
Yes.
Was it September?
Because it was Ian Diane, the end of September, both of them.
Yes.
I thought they were December.
Priscilla's correct, because the new one started, the new person started in October.
Okay, so just delete that whole thing. We must have it someplace else.
Somehow it got...
Popped up again.
Retired again.
Good memory.[1690.62]